Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 11th, Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. We have four items on the agenda for this evening. We have a very full agenda. We are going to be taking public comment, but I am also going to be trying to keep us as closely as possible to not go in over three hours. So we'll see how it goes. We will sell no wine before it's time, as I like to say, but brevity is the soul of wit. With that, Jen Davis-Hayes is going to lead us off with ID 0409 Transit Oriented Development. We call it TOD/Opportunity Center Update.
Great. Thank you very much. So yes, we are here for a brief update. We will be back at the next work session to talk more in depth about this. So we appreciate the time on your busy agenda. My name is Jen Davis-Hayes. I work at the City Economic and Permit Center. And we have our partners here for our TOD development, Dan Landis from King County Housing Authority and Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development. So real briefly, we are going to look at, give you a quick project status update and then talk about our future council conversations and discussions and overall schedule. And again, we'll be taking down questions that we can then discuss at a future time if they're more in-depth and require some more detail. And overall, we're really excited to be here and tell you about the progress we've made and the next steps. So for those of you who are watching tonight or have not heard about the transit-oriented development, we just want to give a brief overview that the project has 355, and I noticed I put a plus there because what we have in the MOU and what we have talked about before has been 355 units with 175 of them affordable at a range of 40% to 80% AMI. As the design has gone along, those numbers have increased, not decreased, but until that set, I didn't want to put an exact number there. And then the 34,000 square foot of commercial ground floor, commercial space, including the 10,000 square feet for Opportunity Center, and a quarter acre public plaza, which will be on the Newport side. This is in addition to a new street between, called 13th Avenue right along here, and some mid-block crossing and some wetland improvements along here. So that's the basics about the component. And this project would not have been made possible if the city didn't purchase what's called the former King County Roads property. So this is the site of the current CenturyLink property operations, and the plan is to remove them to the relocation site over here next to the city's shops and RV park there. So that, again, real basic overview. Any questions about that before I move on? Okay, good. So getting into what's happened since we were last here. So we, for the relocation site, so again, that's over by the shops, we actually completed the remediation and received a no further action letter. And that was really important to CenturyLink because they didn't want to own a property that had any contamination or had the potential for having to do more remediation. So that was a great effort that we received. We also have finished the annexation zoning and short plat is complete. So there are now two parcels and two tracks. Two of those tracks are going to be open space. And our development team has progressed with starting the civil engineering for the new building. So again, they had a concept plan of what it was. They're going to be working with CenturyLink to say, so it's exactly the type of things that you want in here before they come in for permits. For the actual project site, TOD site, one of the things we've been working a lot on lately is, and some of you may have heard, that there's a difference between the deed and the short plat for the current CenturyLink operation site. So basically, there's a 30-foot difference between what's recorded in the legal documents for the short plaque and what is billed out to as per the deed. And that was a little bit of surprise. And so we've been working with land use attorneys and talking to the adjacent property owner to the east, which is Sterling Realty Organization, SRO, they own Cascade Business Park, and trying to facilitate a solution so that then we can come forward and just adjust that boundary line. So with that 30 feet, without that 30 feet, this project wouldn't be able to happen because obviously it would take a large portion of the development. The building is approximately 200 feet wide, so 30 feet would take a lot of that and take a lot of unit space away. So we are hoping to have, we're going to, the latest volley of communications that's back in SRO's court, and we'll be hearing back from them within two weeks, they said, about the response. So there has not been a contentious conversation. It's more like trying to figure out how to move forward because if you look there, the line that is built to is basically what everybody thought was the property line. So they have also, the development team has also refined the building of the TOD sites. And I mentioned they are looking at getting more apart, more units into that. And then we've had some conversations with CenturyLink around collaboration to get the development agreement in draft form. So before I move on, is there any questions about that project, the update here? Okay, good. Okay, so the next slide talks about the thing we, the newest change to the TOD. So we're talking about new information about the partnership status. And so we, again, this will be, we'll be coming back to a further, a future work session to talk in more detail because right now we don't have all the details, but we also, again, want to be cognizant of time. So we were informed in February that Spectrum's equity partner is no longer in the deal as of last November. So since that time, they have been working to try to figure out how to continue to move the project forward. And one of the conversations was with King County Housing Authority, the potential for them to take the lead on this project. They had some conversations with their leadership and did some analysis, and they decided that they feel strongly about this project, that it could be a successful project, and have decided to take the lead. So in the original structure that we have in the MOU, we have Spectrum as the lead and then King County Housing Authority as the partner, development partner. So the potential options that we're looking at now and they're discussing is where King County takes the lead. It could be that Spectrum's still part of the deal and has a new equity partner. It could be that King County Housing Authority has another, a different partner to develop or that King County itself, King County Housing Authority itself, would actually develop the market rate housing. The one thing that I want to be clear is that they are committed to providing all of the units and all the components that we agreed to in the MOU. So there's not a change to, when somebody would drive by and see in 2025 and see the whole project complete, they would not say, oh, I thought Spectrum was going to do this. The actual project will look the same. So the takeaway is that we are really excited that King County Housing Authority has stepped up to the plate, and we think that that will help us move the project forward as opposed to waiting until something comes forward. But both partners are working on trying to figure that out. Again, why will we, will we be coming back and talking in more detail? Any initial questions about that? Okay. And then, so of course, timing is always a question. So we are looking to have an additional work session at the end of this month, early April. So we'll be talking to leadership about scheduling that. And if things move as planned, we plan to have another open house before we come back to council. So the development agreement is currently being drafted, and the lawyers are going to be sending it any day to us, I understand. So then we'll have some staff internal review to look at that, to bring it to council in April or May. And here, I just talk about what those steps are for the development agreement because it's not just a one-touch. It actually comes to land and shore twice. It goes to development commission twice. We'll be planning on a full council discussion about that because it's a very important project, and then come back for a full vote. That's a lot of process, and we have partners who like to, you know, obviously be as thorough with that communication, but also wanting to make sure that that doesn't take another year in that time. So we are looking forward to, again, starting that probably beginning of summer, April, May, at the earliest. Any questions about that?
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. The community open houses, April, May, and the land and shore is also open, is also for April, May. And so I wondered if it would be possible to ensure that the community open house occur first so that land and shore would then have that information.
Yep. That is our plan. And so depending how quickly we can get to the next step for us for the development agreement. So the open house would look at the site plan of it, and so that would be really helpful, like you mentioned, to bring that information back to council. So that's our plan.
Okay. And then my other question was about the community open house, which elements, you mentioned the site plan, but which element specifically will the community be coming and speaking about?
So they'll present the updates to, I think, the last, the last open house, it was more about the Opportunity Center and then kind of a larger, another one that had talked about the actual different components. And there wasn't a lot of discussion about this is how, where we are in the design process. So they're going to see, they're going to see a little bit more of how the buildings will look and some of the details. And we haven't talked actually about all of what is the components to provide, to, I'm sorry, to request input about because of course, this is a private development, so some things we can't say, okay, what do you think about this? But the things that we've talked about before is how it interacts with the street and so how that look is, looking at that, there's some things that they suggest for the public plaza to help it make it more interactive. There's going to be a trail along the wetlands, and so if there's any communication or anything that people would like to provide us input about that, that would be really helpful. Yep. But thank you. Okay.
Councilmember Ray.
Hey Jen, just to follow up on something you just said, and maybe I didn't hear it right, but I just want to confirm this. You said we can't ask us, this is a private thing, or we can't get input? Why would that be?
No, I'm sorry. So what I meant, what I meant by that is that it's a private project, so we're not going to ask people to come in and provide comment, or to provide input on things that we wouldn't normally for any private development. So we have, we are a stakeholder in this, in this project, so that's why we're doing, because we don't typically do these type of open houses where people come in multiple times to talk about a project. There's a general kind of this is what's happening. But we have a lot of guidelines that are in code that we cannot, you know, kind of change because of public input. And so we're, so we're not looking to get guidance for things that we already have set in code, right? Which again, a lot of times people will want to come in and talk about colors or materials, but that's pretty much set in code. And as far as we'll take input, they'll take input about the tenants and that stuff, but that's not something that will require our partners to say, you have to have a coffee shop or something like that.
I was just thinking, because it's not, now, it is a development agreement, it's not just in our development, that we would have more flexibility on what we could and should do.
Sure.
And so I'd just like to see if we can broaden our purview when we get to the customer or the citizen input since this is more than just typical development.
Yeah. Yes. No, sorry for kind of making it appear that we weren't open to that. Okay. Anything else?
Councilmember Goodman.
And just a, just a follow-up on that, and particularly because it's not, it is a private project, but there is the 10,000 square foot space, and whatever community meeting we had was many, many months ago. So I would, I would favor that still being a topic as part of the community open house.
Yeah, and I think we'll have our partners there for that. So that's important to have health point and such there. So, okay.
Councilmember Witterstein.
Do you have more? Jen, do you have more?
One more slide, really, just as an overview of the, the schedule. Because the other piece is, it's nice to know when you're coming to council, but when are we going to see something? And I think that's also, so we expect that CenturyLink relocation, the construction will begin in mid-2020 with them basically moving out first quarter of 2021, and then you'll start to see some work actually at that CenturyLink operation site in mid-2021 with a completion, substantial completion in mid-2023. So it's around the corner in some ways, but we're really excited again to kind of keep this project moving with our, our partners. Okay.
I have some questions about risk to the project.
Okay.
And I was wondering if there was anything, any reason for the equity partner pulling out that may be germane to this deal or any risk about this whole opportunity that maybe we should be aware of?
Okay. Can we, I can answer in general, but would that be something that would be okay to get into more in the work session in the future, or did you?
No, I'm actually curious about it now, but if, or soon.
Okay.
But it's a big deal, so when I hear there's a partnership and we're all looking at each other and everything looks good, and we have some funding lined up, though I never heard the final story about all the funding, and then part of it moves, sometimes that could be for a material reason that we should know about. Many times it could be for reasons that don't pertain to us. Lots of external reasons.
Sure.
And I'm not interested in those. I'm interested in any that actually may pertain to us. Something about this environment, this place, this plan, this kind of project, this partnership, this city, that land, what might we want to know if there's anything that pertains to some risk in the project?
Okay. And I'm going to, so I'm going to actually ask Hal Ferris if he's willing to come up and give a brief, I don't want to speak for the, you know, the development partners, but in general, the market, the softening of the market is, you know, one of the reasons that we were told. And I don't know if there's anything additional that Hal would like to speak to at this time?
And it's good to have this calendar up here to help frame that discussion. So yeah, we were informed by partner Laird Norton in late fall that there's a number of reasons for them choosing to not go further with the project. And one of them, the market is softening. The rental rates are softening. The construction costs remain high because of the, still the robust amount of construction activity in the broader community. So we're not, where we might otherwise see both of those go together right now, we're not seeing that. So that was a concern. Also, just the process, which has always been the case, but layered on top of the changes in the market is, is the multiple steps in terms of having to go and relocate CenturyLink. And we, as of this date, there still is not land control with CenturyLink. You know, the appraisals haven't been done, the concept plan hasn't been done, so, and then that combined with the conflict in the title and the deed, you know, there's still uncertainty over that getting resolved. And those were things that have taken a long time to come about and aren't yet solved for. So they chose, it's a, if you recall from the capital stack that we presented at one of the meetings, their investment called for $30 million in investment on their part, and a lot of that money was going in all up front, well, not, not a lot, but some of it was going up front to help pay for all of those things to take that risk out. And they felt that there was too much uncertainty, and that combined with the market where it was, that they, they couldn't commit to going forward, fully going forward with the project all the way through to end of completion, that they might have to pause. And we felt, we felt, and the Housing Authority felt, and there was never any hesitancy about the strength of the location, the importance of the community, and the kind of fundamental location, location, location that comes with real estate, that was never an issue. But it was the combination of the timing and a number of the pieces that hadn't come together from a risk management standpoint that they felt they couldn't commit to the project fully. And that was the reason for them.
Thank you, Hal. I appreciate that. I have two follow-on questions. And, and actually none directly for you, Hal, so thank you very much. I am kind of wondering if, I guess there's really just one question, but is there any other funding that has already been, maybe identified or perhaps potentially part of this deal? Like, and you may have to fill in some blanks for me. I remember Hal telling us a while ago, going down to HUD and talking, and I know that that, those dollars were going to be important to this. What other parts of funding may be at risk right now, if any? I mean, I know we don't have a partner yet. I know that's probably a bigger question. There's a big part of the development there. But, but we've always been trying to manage this from like, not only how it's going to get done, there's a lot of moving parts, but how it was going to be funded.
Sure.
And who was going to be doing what and what they were going to create.
Right.
And, and so now there seems like there's a pretty big hole. I mean, we don't have, and, and I appreciate with King County Housing Authority saying, and we want to drive forward with this, but you know, they've got certain realities as well, and, and funding being some of those. So is there, is there something, this is a, to put up a date now, you know, like you have right here, mid-2021, that maybe construction begins, when at this point I just found out we don't even have our partnership and all the funding aligned. I'm wondering if there's other, what are, what do we view as the risks now?
Sure. So I'll let Dan Landis come up from King County Housing Authority answer that. I mean, again, I think what I've heard from them is that they are committed, they could go forward with that King County alone option with their financing. But let's, let's hear a little bit more from him, and I know that they've all been working to look, identify other sources if needed.
So Dan Landis, King County Housing Authority. The affordable housing component, so the, the part that we were originally going to build is, we've received $12 million in funding from Arch and King County, and that's secure. They're sticking with us. The rest of our financing comes from tax-exempt bonds, which are relatively easy to get, and low-income housing tax credits, which are automatic if we get the tax-exempt bond. So we're confident that we have, despite the sort of different assumptions now than when we originally started, I mean, some of the things have actually broken in our favor. For example, Issaquah is now considered a part of a difficult development area, which gives you more tax credits. So it's, it's actually beneficial to us that we got a little bit of a delay. So the affordable housing is in good shape. We don't feel that any of that financing is in jeopardy. However, the, what we committed to do, we had to agree that we were going to take down the whole site. And so, so all of the costs associated with the site that normally would have been borne by our for-profit partner, we are willing to risk. So we will provide interim financing to make that happen. And we are willing, if necessary, to develop the market rate housing ourselves. It would still be similar in affordability to what was contemplated in the original partnership, but we have the same gap. We have ideas about, different ideas about how we could fill that. Alternatively, we could develop the, or get the development agreement for the whole site and then market the, a market rate piece to somebody else at that point in time. And so between those two options or the possibility that, that Spectrum can find another investor partner, we felt confident enough to move forward. So at this point, we feel like we're, we're assuming a lot more risk than we were, but we feel comfortable with that.
All right. And thank you then. The related question then is, so there, I'm looking at, I have a time, I have a schedule up here. Construction says shooting for mid-2021. I imagine there are some markers that you're going to have to hit in the near, in the next 12 months to be able to say if that's a realistic date. When, you know, when's the next time when you think you'll, you would have an update for us to know if this is at risk or this is still possible?
So I think the big driver on getting to a mid, a mid-2021 construction start is having everything worked out with CenturyLink. So that's something that we're going to hopefully have in the next couple of months. So maybe by June, we will have the full agreement in place and know exactly what we're building for them and be in the process of getting permits from the city for that. So having all of that out of the way and then getting started on the replacement site construction is critical. And there's no financing issue for that because we are putting all of that money up.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess then the last question would be for Jen. We, the, we have put the multifamily tax exemption on this project, not on this property. Is there anything that's transpired that would affect that, or is that you think this is still, per our original intent, qualifies this project for the MF?
That's a great question. That's actually what we'll be coming back and talking to, to the whole council about how each of these partnership structures could affect that. So if King County Housing Authority decides to build on their own and own on their own, they are a government agency that doesn't have to pay property taxes, so they will not use the MFT, right? If they get a new partner, that partner would, or Spectrum finds equity partner, that the MFT would still be utilized by that, by them for the 12 years that we allowed. And again, all of the agreements that we have made and committed, they have committed to, will get carried forward. So if they identify a new development partner, they will say, here is the MOU, here's the MFT requirements, and that's what we're going to be moving forward with versus, okay, we want to do something drastically different. So that's the intention right now, and part of coming back again in a few weeks is to get into the, get to the details about that and having you guys question and understand what's, what the implications are for that and how we plan to address that in the development agreement. So then we come back with the development agreement with your concerns addressed.
Okay, appreciate that. My expectation would be that this project, if it stays materially the same, we're talking a mix of market rate and affordable and some other components.
Sure.
That this is, still would meet the intent of, of the tax exemption.
Yes. It would meet the intent, but again, if King County built the market rate, they wouldn't need to use MFT because they wouldn't pay property taxes.
I understand that. It's more of like, we made a legislative call, and I'm wondering if, if any of that may have to be revisited based upon something that happens here. That's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
Not that we're aware. And so if they don't use it, they don't use it. It's on the, only on the books for that one property. So.
No, it's on the books for that project, not that property.
Project, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, the pilot. Yes.
Other questions for Jen?
Okay.
Anything else?
No, we will be back. And so we will, again, send you a memo beforehand and provide you, you know, the opportunity to further discuss the details and the implications. And we're, again, we're really excited that King County Housing Authority has stepped up as the lead because we are then able to continue to move forward as opposed to waiting to finding more financing, I think is important. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, we're running behind already, but I am going to ask if any members of the public want to speak to this issue before we move on. Seeing none. Dan and Hal, thank you so much for being here this evening and answering questions on the spot. Always appreciate it, people willing to, to step up to the mic. So thank you so much, and thanks for this update. And we look forward to talking more soon with the administration. With that, we will move on to ID 0402 Mobility Master Plan Introduction with Stephen Padua, our Senior Transportation Planner.
Thank you, Council President Martz. My name is Stephen Padua. I am the Senior Transportation Planner with the Public Works Engineering Department. It's good to finally meet all of you. I've been on board for a little over six months now, and we've been hard at work at putting together the Mobility Master Plan and a few other things kind of tag along with it. Before we get started, are there any questions on the slides that you were able to review or kind of the information that was put in the memo? My goal for tonight is to give you a brief introduction into the Mobility Master Plan process and to talk about how we're going to be engaging the Transportation Advisory Board throughout the process as we develop the plan. And then also, as we go through that process, talk about how we're going to be engaging the community and keeping them involved in this process to talk about what the city's vision for transportation is going to be. As a brief overview, I'll talk about the purpose of this project. I'll go over the schedule. I'll talk about the Transportation Advisory Board and their structure designed around the Mobility Master Plan process, and then I'll go into the community engagement. Yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
There we go.
So for the project purpose, a few years ago, the City Council and the staff agreed that the city needed to go through a process to develop a master plan, which we all feel is a great idea to really bring the city together on a vision, but also to develop consistent policies on how we want to move transportation forward for the future, but also as in our implementation tools. Part of what staff has been working on is, is hiring a consultant to help us with development of this plan and the formation of a new advisory board to develop the plan itself. And one of the major goals as part of this process is to really work with the Transportation Advisory Board to look at a lot of the existing policies that the city has and to really round up how we really want to approach transportation. If you look at page 17 of your packet, is the schedule for this process, and I'll walk you through kind of the major phases in the plan development, which includes trends and conditions analysis as kind of our major first step, the identification of priorities, which is a step we're transitioning to. We'll be looking at all policies, programs, and projects in an evaluation process to look at what's existing and what potentially could be proposed for the future. And then we'll be going through the plan drafting process. As part of this, we have three major phases for public engagement, all part of the priorities discussion, the policies, projects, and programs discussion, and then again in the draft review process. For the City Council, the, we have five major touchpoints where we meet with the City Council. Today is that first touch. I want to just briefly talk about what the schedule is and, and get any feedback or answer any questions that you have about it. The next step is to meet with you on April 8th at your work session and actually have a joint session with the Transportation Advisory Board to have that initial discussion on city priorities for transportation. I'll return in June with an update on how we're doing with this project, and then I'll return again in September with a joint session with the Transportation Advisory Board to talk about the priorities and what it's led to in terms of our evaluation of all of the projects, policies, and programs. And then in late 2019, 2019, early 2020, we'll, I'll return with the draft review process prior to going in late 2019, early 2020, I'll return with the draft review process prior to going to City Council for adoption of the plan. Before I move on, are there any questions on the schedule? So page 18 of your packet is our schedule specifically for the Transportation Advisory Board, but around the Mobility Master Plan Development Process. As you can see, we're going to be staying actively engaged with this group throughout the development of this process to get their feedback as we move through each of the major phases with monthly meetings. And in some parts of the schedule, they'll have two meetings in the month to help us move the project forward. As part of the discussions for the MMP, we'll also be discussing how, how staff can be working on the policies. And there have been a couple of major policy updates that have been flagged by other departments and staff that will be actually starting that process for implementation of the Mobility Master Plan coming from the priority process. And that includes the Complete Streets Policy update, update of the pedestrian crossing guidelines, and an update of the traffic calming program, things, major citywide policies that we think the Transportation Advisory Board would really benefit from as part of the discussion for the development of the master plan, but also benefit for the city as we move those policies forward. We'll also be having joint meetings with other boards and commissions so we can build some of those partnerships around how to move transportation forward. I don't think I need to explain to any of you how complex of an issue transportation is. And the Transportation Advisory Board alone isn't going to be able to solve a lot of the issues around the traffic congestion or how to move different mobility options throughout the city. And so we really want to leverage some of the knowledge and support that we get from our other boards and commissions to be able to have those discussions for the Mobility Master Plan, but also in some of their work with other boards and commissions. And then in 2020, we, we plan to decrease the amount of meetings for the Mobility, or the Transportation Advisory Board because the expectation is, once we get past that plan drafting process, the demand for meetings for them should be able to move to every other month until we start really ramping up into the implementation of the Mobility Master Plan, which we can decide in 2020 or 2021 if we want to increase the level of, or the number of meetings that they have. For community engagement, well, our plan is to really leverage a lot of the work that's been going forward with a strategic plan. And we're working with Office Sustainability and a lot of their tools and their strategies on how to really engage a lot of the diverse community. We plan to have a really strong online presence, but at the same time, we're going to be working with our consultant team to really engage the diverse community, either with pop-up events that work with pre-existing events, or go to meetings where we can talk with the community groups and try to get them to engage in this process. So we can learn a little more of what their demands or needs for the transportation system are. We'll be using Peak Democracy, similar to our other major projects, to get survey information out. And then we'll also be working with the Communications Group to really work through our social media network and our electronic media network to engage a lot of the community that has been very interested in this type of process. We'll have regular updates to our project website and then update the community at large to make sure that they know where we are in the process and how they can stay involved in the process as we move forward through each phase. For next steps, we plan to come back to you on April 8th, and we'll come back with our consultant team to talk about citywide priorities and have that discussion with the Transportation Advisory Board. And then after that, I plan to return in June to give you an update on the project. But there's also additional plan, additional items as part of the plan is, you'll see that there's field trips planned in May. What this includes is, we're working with our neighborhood communities who have gone through this process before, and we're going to work with their principal staff on the topics that they discussed through their master plan development process, but also the type of policies and programs and projects that kind of came out of that process so that we can kind of learn from their experience on the direction that they took and why, and leverage some of the information that they were able to put together for if they have light rail coming in their communities or mass transit coming in their communities, or how they really pushed on walking and bicycling networks or pushed that community to support kind of their process. And by the end of next week, I should have dates available. And the idea for the field trips is to hopefully have two or three council members at each of these, but it really is going to be based on availability, and I understand that. And the same is going to go for staff. I'm really trying to make it easy for the other cities to schedule their own staff time, but minimizing how much time they're having to put into this because they're, they have all agreed to help us in this process, kind of as partners in our Are there any questions about the schedule or the process itself?
Councilmember Winterston, I think?
Thank you. When is the meeting, the joint meeting in April?
That is going to, with the City Council?
Yes.
It's going to be April 8th at the work session.
It's our regular scheduled work session.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
So this is a bit of a generic question, so it may not be fair, but I'm asking it anyway. We hear a lot about Peak Democracy as a citizen engagement tool, and I don't know that I've ever seen anything that we've used Peak Democracy where we've actually seen the results. How do you envision using Peak Democracy to really help inform and drive and engage the community in this process?
So a part of the strategy that we're working with our consultant on is pushing out the information as we're asking through the survey. And Peak Democracy is really good at being able to visualize a lot of the information or concepts that we're really going to be introducing as part of this process. But at the same time, it's really good at simplifying a lot of the survey questions and gathering, gathering that so we can provide the analytics to see who's responding to these surveys and how we can use that information to really expand different communities in the city who aren't necessarily providing information at the time. Hopefully, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
But I have actually a request. Maybe at a future work session, Administrator Moon and President Marts, it would be really nice to have an overview on Peak Democracy because we hear a lot about it, and it sounds like it's a pretty powerful tool that we could use. And I just, I'm just a little bit ignorant of it, and I don't want to be.
It's a great suggestion, and I, there are council members who are even more, more recent vintage than you who would probably also love to get that update. So it's a great suggestion. Councilmember Winterston?
A related question. We saw, and I don't know, you may not be working on the Gilman Corridor project, but I believe we saw data that had Geo codes associated. We saw who responded to what kind of questions and where they were in the city. Was that an example of a Peak Democracy report?
Yes, yes, it is.
Other questions for Stephen? Council Deputy President Patisse?
Thank you for the presentation. Another general, just general question in terms of community engagement, obviously, that there are a lot, a lot of different areas in terms of social media and democracy. With the pop-up events, have some of those been predefined and there are more to come and over a certain period of time? And do you have a certain number that you're trying to reach with, with the pop-up events?
At a minimum, we're looking at two pop-up events during each of the engagement phases. But it really kind of depends on the availability of the community groups and availability of staff to be able to get to that timing because sometimes events overlap a little bit, which is hard to be at two places at once. But we're really trying to outline that in a draft, or we're developing a public engagement plan right now. And so we're hoping to finalize those dates very soon.
Okay. Sorry to have you repeat that. I just didn't know if there were additional beyond that or others that you were trying to add. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I have one sort of general comment and then one question. So the comment is, this is one of our new commissions with the Transportation Advisory Board. And I think that the onboarding that they're doing, all of that background, that they're all getting on the same page and that they're all learning about, and going through the data and becoming really knowledgeable on the subject before they start looking at the particulars is great. And it's something that I think really empowers the community. And I'm really happy to see that. And hopefully, we can do more of that with our commissions. And I also really appreciate the approach of having the joint commission meetings and having more voices in terms of different commissions working together and the commission working with the council. So I think that that's all innovative and a direction that I appreciate a lot and see a lot of value in. And then I did have a question. So we have both the strategic plan that's going in parallel, which has a mobility component. It's one of our objectives, has to do with mobility. And then we also, just at our last meeting, we had a presentation regarding transportation capital project funding recommendations and an ad hoc long-term financial committee on council that was making recommendations that we reviewed. So I wondered if and how the Transportation Advisory Board would be able to assist or provide input for those two ongoing projects that council is talking about.
Yes. And it is still a little bit early with the advisory board because they are kind of finishing up their, their beginning process. I will be sending them the draft survey that Office Sustainability has released for publicing feedback on the strategic plan itself. I'm hoping to get feedback from them later this month when I will briefly kind of talk about that and answer any questions they have on the strategic plan itself. The consultant knows about the strategic plan. They've, I've been keeping them regularly updated as we work through the process of developing the mobility aspect of the strategic plan. And the, could you repeat the second question?
Yes. And so the second thing, and this could be a follow-up question, and I also see maybe Administrator Moon would like, I'm not sure. But the second question is about, at our last meeting, we had a transportation capital project funding discussion. So that's going to be an ongoing discussion regarding some long, long-term and important transportation projects that we're considering what to fund and how to fund. And so I wondered if the board would be able to, or if there would be a way for input.
CD Administrator.
Thank you. It's our intent to brief them on that. We will certainly engage them just like we will be engaging public throughout council's decision-making as that's to come in the next month or so. We had not envisioned that they would be part of the approval and recommendation piece to this as they are just getting started. And the task of prioritizing capital projects is one of the council, these projects that have been selected have already been prioritized by the council over several past years. And the task of coming up with these recommendations for funding sources and projects that would fit within each of those funding sources was a task that the council gave to the Ad Hoc Finance Committee. So we've been trying to follow up on those assignments along the timelines that were given by the council, but we will certainly keep that group apprised. We had not anticipated because it wasn't the council's direction to rethink what the current capital priorities are and how to pursue them. But there will be plenty of opportunities for the TAB going forward to be involved in speaking to how we prioritize transportation-related capital projects. They will be setting some of the, helping to establish some of the framework for policymaking, for setting criteria to prioritize projects, but that's more prospective.
If I can add on to the city administrator's response, the September, the planned September joint session with City Council, that discussion is primarily going to be around the financial component of the Mobility Master Plan and talking about how we finance the master plan, policies, programs, and projects, but also kind of looking at those prioritization criteria and having that discussion then.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I've seen in some cases, a Mobility Master Plan is kind of a subsection of an overall transportation plan and one that focuses more on walking and biking and those forms of mobility. Is that the intent here, or is it overarching, including single occupancy vehicles and transit and things like that?
It is overarching. So it's, you can see it kind of in place of the comprehensive plan. Much of the vision, the goals and policies that are identified in the comprehensive plan, transportation element, potentially will be replaced by what's identified in the Mobility Master Plan. And so we'll work, we'll now have the Mobility Master Plan as that top of the chain and work down to all the other subsequent transportation planning documents to make updates in accordance to the transportation master plans or the Mobility Master Plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen?
Great, thank you.
All right. And with that, I'll ask if any members, before we move on, if any members of the public wish to speak to this issue? All right, we will move on. We're going to go to ID 0413, sorry, 0413 Citywide Strategic Draft Plan. David Fujimoto, our Sustainability Director.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I'm here to provide a presentation and overview of what we're achieving as a major milestone for this work on this strategic plan. This is a project that's been underway for about a year, at least with this group and with the city, although it has some foundations and roots with City Council going back many, many years, as I'm sometimes reminded, and some council members who had some foresight in thinking that it's important for us to be looking further out into the future and thinking about how we can provide a context for the variety of the actions that the city needs to take. So I do want, before I get started, to want to thank you all for your dedication and your time for many stops and many discussions about the strategic plan. I think they have been quite useful in helping to shape up the overall approach, as well as the work by a variety of city staff work groups who have been dedicating quite a bit of time to this project. So I wanted to thank, make those acknowledgements first. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief overview of what's in the draft strategic plan, and then I'll briefly talk about some of the engagement steps that are coming forward, and then what's anticipated for the next steps with the strategic plan process itself. First, as a little bit of a point of background, so why is the strategic plan? I alluded to that a little bit in my initial statements. But really thinking back, you know, in the course of the work, especially with local government and having a whole variety of different issues to address over time, and needing to kind of take that occasional step back from the crank, if you will, and to think about longer-term issues and the overall context for decision-making, was really part of that intent. Strategic planning is a recognized best practice by International City Management Association Alliance for Innovation. It's something that many governments and businesses have done. But really, for Issaquah, it was about better aligning our efforts and our focus to get around a clear vision and strategy for how to get there, the means for actively pursuing strategies to help bridge the current conditions with longer-term vision and goals, kind of helping to bridge that gap. And in some respects, internally to the organization, also providing for alignment in terms of how the city gets work done. Oftentimes, the community's goals and expectations don't necessarily align to departmental lines of business, for example. At its core, the strategic plan wanted to work from community priorities, those issues that, and concerns that were most important for community members, and then to strengthen the city's ability to make strategic forward-looking and deliberate and informed decisions. We also knew that we wanted to incorporate performance metrics into our regular course of work to better inform decision-making, and then ultimately understand that this is a communication tool back out to the public about how we intend to get work done. And the planning approach also mirrored this, this aspect, started, as you might recall, around this time last year with a very broad, community-based approach. We moved from there to update the city's vision, mission, and guiding principles, something which hadn't, which was last updated in 2014 on a fairly limited engagement process. And I actually went back and looked, and before that, it was all the way back until 1990 when that was done. So it's been quite a while. So it took the opportunity to take a broader array of community engagement and to inform and update to the vision, mission, and guiding principles. And we've taken that approach and focused on results-oriented or outcome-based And we've taken that approach and focused on results-oriented or outcome-based approach. So you'll see a lot of...that's described in the plan in terms of things that we'd like to see, the outcomes we'd like to see in our community, and not just the kind of efforts, but the results as a part of the approach. And then from there, we developed some potential actions to help guide and provide some sense of what those different objectives would look like. And because we knew that implementation was as important, if not more important, than the plan itself, we also spent some time focusing on implementation framework. Real briefly, on community engagement, there was a pretty concerted effort to hear the voice of the community in this effort. We used a variety of different tactics early on in this process to try and reach the community where it's at, to think about how can we get a broad cross-section of the community, hear a diversity of voices, reach audiences that we may not hear from on a regular basis. And so there was a lot of ways in which that was done. Up here on the slide, on the right...left-hand side, excuse me, it might be a little bit hard to see, but there's a comparison between the community profile and the engagement profile. And this is something that we tracked through the initial phases of the process to get us a better understanding of what the demographics look like in the community and what we are seeing back. And this helped us to gauge whether we needed to kind of push a little bit harder on some areas in terms of trying to get some additional engagement, or where we were kind of seeing pockets. And overall, I think we did pretty good. We looked at a variety of aspects, whether it was demographic diversity in age, income, ethnicity, geographic diversity in terms of neighborhoods across the city, as well as how long folks had lived in the community itself. So that was certainly an intentional part of the effort. And we used a variety of tactics, as I mentioned, both in-person as well as online. We did pop-up events. We developed a tool called a Meeting in a Box, which was essentially a self-facilitated focus group. We did hold actual focus groups as well. So there was a whole variety of different ways in which we reached out to the community. And then we also intentionally made an effort through the process to check back. So there were various points when we did check back on strategic priorities, wanting to hear back on goals and objectives, making sure that we have some of that content, and then also, again, now with the release of this draft plan. Yes?
David, so I don't want this to sound like a complaint, but more like an opportunity, because I think the administration did a really admirable job with reaching out to the community. But this is definitely skewed wider and more affluent than our community as a whole. So the opportunity, it seems like, is the next time we go to do something like this, the next time we do something major, how do we get past that bias a little bit? Because it definitely...particularly on income, it really shows up.
I think that's a great point. You know, I think what we had discovered, one of the lessons learned, if you will, and we will have a full kind of debrief on lessons learned, but is that we know that we are more...we're able to reach certain audiences more effectively, and in some cases, we don't have all of the relationships that are built that would provide for more easy kind of entry into some populations in our community. And some of those are relationship building, so that, you know, we have those relationships and we can kind of ask for feedback in a more readily available fashion. And I think the city is starting to do that more and more, but at the point in time when we did this initial work, probably don't have those as well-built out as we potentially could.
Thanks.
You all have seen this slide before. Really, this is both a process and kind of framework approach. You all know that we followed an iterative approach, starting at the very highest levels of vision, mission, guiding principles, and kind of worked down through the strategic priorities, the goals, the objectives, and then finally, the potential actions and performance measures. There were three different phases of work, thinking about who we are, and those are really around the vision, mission, and guiding principles, and that was the end result. Where do we want to go, meaning the strategic priorities and the goal statements? And then finally, how do we want to get there, and thinking about the objectives, potential actions, and success measures. Getting into a little bit of the plan, this is kind of the plan on the page, if you will. It includes most of the different components of the strategic plan kind of in summary. It doesn't get down to the potential actions or performance measures, but is intended to kind of highlight and show those different components and how they fit together. The vision, I realized after I assembled the slide deck, I didn't actually have a slide on the vision, so I wanted to take a moment to read that. And the vision is that Issaquah thrives as a welcoming community, creating a sustainable legacy for future generations that honors its rich history and passion for the natural environment. So that is the new vision statement that's proposed in the draft strategic plan. And it relates back to this vision, or excuse me, the mission in terms of how the city operates, the guiding principles, which are kind of our guiding light for how we choose to operate. And then it rolls into the strategic priority areas, of which there are six, the goal statements, which are statements of desired outcomes, and then the objectives, which really, I think, are the building blocks of the plan and help to articulate how you can actually make progress with those goals and what we're seeking to achieve. And then, as I mentioned before, the potential actions are there to help give some flavor, if you will, to the objectives, to get a better understanding of what we're looking at and thinking about, even though that they're not formally adopted as policy statements like the other elements would be. And then harkening to the performance measures, we call them success measures here, essentially the metrics that will help us to understand which way we're...how we're headed and inform our progress. As I mentioned, there are six strategic priority areas around mobility, growth and development, environmental stewardship, social and economic vitality, city leadership and services, and For mobility, the goal is getting around town is easier for people who live, work, and play here. And thinking about some of the key elements that came to play and some of the attributes that were identified is that traffic affects many aspects of life in Issaquah. There's projected growth in and around Issaquah, and we are wanting to consider many different modes of travel and understand how we can improve the overall transportation system. We've identified three different objectives. Those are our plan for the transportation system is in place and funding is secured for major projects. The second is that there are near-term connections and efficiencies in the mobility system, so not just planning, but actually putting into place more immediate measures to improve the system right away. And then thinking a little bit further down the road and looking at the preferred location and vision for light rail integration as established. So thinking about a major decision or a major investment in the infrastructure system in the valley floor and how that would affect all of its related parts and components. There are four different success measures, excuse me, that were identified: travel mode share, system connectivity, system access, and community satisfaction. Growth and development is the next priority area, and the goal here is that growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Again, Issaquah has been experiencing rapid growth, in part because we're a very desirable community, prosperous economics in the region. We're also driven by aspects such as the Growth Management Act, which sets in place targets which the community must achieve. We know that the city has made some decisions about protecting some of the hillsides and the community's character and encouraging the focus of development on the valley floor. And as that growth continues, we know that maintaining a community's character and providing amenities, housing choices, and services becomes increasingly important. Overall, maintaining livability as a key attribute in Issaquah. There were four different objectives which were identified. These are maintaining neighborhood character and putting protections into place, having effective implementation of plans, and thinking about proactive adjustments to those plans with an emphasis on livability and balance between jobs and housing, infrastructure planning for growth, and working to increase the availability of public amenities, housing options, and services, moving essentially to a more complete community for a city of our size. And we also identified three different success measures: balanced growth, community livability, and infrastructure investment to inform our progress on mobility, or excuse me, growth and development. Environmental stewardship is the next area, and the goal here is that environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded. Some of the key elements were that, for Issaquah, the environment is a defining feature. Our natural setting, our strong environmental values are highly regarded in this community. And then we've also seen that engagement of the community and development of partnerships to steward the Issaquah environment is an important opportunity. That, as well as land acquisition for preservation and recreation. Three different objectives were identified. These relate to protection enhancement of the environment in a sustainable fashion, stewardship activities and working with the community as active partners. And then also, as I mentioned, the strategic acquisition of lands for, whether they're natural areas, critical areas, parks, trails, and open space, to maximize community benefits. And there were four success measures that were identified around forest health, natural area protection and restoration, salmon habitat health, and community stewardship. Under social and economic vitality, the goal was an economically vital and diverse community is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. Some of the key elements were here were that residential growth was outpacing job creation, and housing affordability was becoming more of a challenge, with it becoming harder for people who work in Issaquah to afford housing in the community. And likewise, more jobs are needed that provide the ability to both live and work in the community. We're seeking more businesses to support more services and improved access to services, supportive services, which the community also needs, hopefully in order to increase the possibilities to live, work, and thrive here in town. There are four objectives that were identified relating to increasing the range of living wage jobs, housing affordability across the income range to increase live and work here in Issaquah, services to reduce inequities in health and well-being, and an increase in new businesses and retention or expansion of existing businesses. There were four different success measures identified around job growth, business growth, housing cost burden, and access to supportive services. Under city leadership and services, the goal was leadership and accountability in the delivery of public services for our growing and diversifying community. Some of the key elements here were about the community becoming more diverse and wanting to respond to that, understanding that good engagement helps us to understand the community's needs better, and that that requires a variety of...or diverse methods, clear communication, and that they really need to be integrated into overall city processes. And then related, that service delivery also requires some investment in our internal operations and our personnel so that we can improve our efficiency and improve the delivery of services out to the community. There were two objectives that were identified here related to equitable and welcoming city government and fostering meaningful engagement, and then on the flip side, utilizing high-performing systems for effective and efficient service delivery. And there were two measures identified related to community satisfaction and community engagement for success measures here. Under infrastructure, the goal was an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and well-maintained, supports current and future community needs. Some of the key elements were that infrastructure provides essentially the underpinning of local economic vitality, the environment, and the daily lives here in Issaquah. The city has in the past leveraged growth and must shift its focus to consider not just expansion, but also ongoing maintenance and replacement of its infrastructure, and that it needs to plan for recent growth to continue to provide for vitality in the future. There is one, but critical key objective, is to put plans and resources into place in order to operate, maintain, and replace infrastructure throughout its lifecycle. And there's a couple of performance measures related to the asset maintenance deferral rate and community satisfaction with infrastructure quality overall. As I mentioned before, we are also building out some tools to help support implementation of the strategic plan and thinking about an implementation framework. We had identified a few different pieces, including thinking about different buckets of work, if you will, a strategic work plan, critical services work plan, and timely opportunities. This kind of disciplined approach recognizes both the reality of the various needs that the city has to play and the need to allocate limited resources. We had also identified some prioritization criteria to help us in the evaluation of different actions the city can take and considering where to time and where to spend those limited resources. And then we also talked about this kind of cycle of implementation and kind of following a plan, do, check, and adjust kind of a cycle, which would allow for continuous improvement, would allow for reporting out to the community, a place for performance measures to enter the equation, and for adjustment to happen throughout that process, so being more deliberate and diligent through the course of our work. Next steps in terms of the draft plan that we have out for community engagement, the draft plan was released today out to the community. There's a tool to get some feedback, and they'll be pushed out through a variety of means. Similar to our process to date, we'll be reaching out to the community with an emphasis on folks that have been participating in the process. We have quite a few folks that we've collected names and information, or email addresses that they provided to the city, saying that they wanted to remain engaged, and so we're reaching back out to those groups and making sure that they're aware of where we're at in the process and actively seeking their involvement. We will also use the kind of full suite of the city's communication tools, whether through web, e-news, social media, and our community partners, doing some things like developing short-format videos to encourage people to go and learn about the plan and to take the survey. Those activities will all be occurring through the end of this month. We will also be making presentations to our boards and commissions, so they can see the latest draft. They have been updated on the process throughout this whole last year, and so this will be an opportunity for them to see the culmination of all that work. And then finally, in terms of next steps for the strategic plan, as I mentioned before, community engagement will continue through the end of this month. We're anticipating a working session with city council in early April to report out on the results of that community engagement and to hopefully work through any remaining questions or issues related to the strategic plan. We're anticipating working with you all over the course of the next few weeks to identify those, so we can have a productive conversation on it. And then we would hope to be able to move forward with a final draft of the strategic plan beginning in late April and ultimately going into May for final adoption.
Councilmember Walsh.
So David, first of all, I would just want to say, the plan looks beautiful. I love seeing that you actually looked at community member makeup and who you reached out to. That's fantastic. I actually don't have any comments on the plan itself, but rather the survey that we are putting out, because I fear that that is not going to be useful to the community or provide useful information to us. I was hoping for much more specific, like, did we get this right? Rank it from one to five? Or a specific question on the goal versus each of the objectives? And maybe this isn't our place, but I just don't feel like an open-ended statement box underneath each of the goal areas is going to give us useful information.
Councilmember Goodman.
I would concur with that comment, and I actually thought we talked about a couple of questions. One is, did you, you know, do you think that these goals will help us, or do you think that these specific objectives would help, as examples, might help us achieve, we want to achieve? objectives would help, as examples might help us achieve, we want to achieve? So I was wondering, you provided some information about why the survey is structured the way it is?
Sure. So I think that I hear the concern. I think there was clearly an intent to try and figure out the best way to try and get that information out and to do it in a way that we can get feedback from the community. One of the things that we had heard from council was an interest in hearing feedback on the objectives, specifically hearing feedback on the objectives and a collection of actions. And so previously, there had been some surveys out to the community on the goal areas themselves as well as the objectives, and so we were really trying to focus in on the objectives and the collections of actions, but recognizing that if we did that across all of the different objectives, with 16 objectives, with collections of actions, potentially with two questions, that would become a rather long survey. And so there was some concern that we would start to lose some feedback around each of those questions and trying to frame those up so that they were more focused on the different goal areas. The communications team was able to utilize a different aspect of peak democracy to be able to present the information in that kind of visual format on a single page, does require some scrolling. We already do recognize that the survey itself is rather long from a kind of viewing standpoint and needing to move through quite a bit of content. And so there is a bit of a trick in trying to balance how to present a fairly significant amount of content and get some feedback about it.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Hunt.
Well, firstly, I had a similar, I just plus one on the survey, and it's always difficult to tease apart open-ended responses if people choose to fill that out, so I'm also concerned about what we will be able to do with that. But then I also had a separate question, which is about, we've always seen these in a different order, and now they're in an order which I think will be, well, which is the order that's anyway going out to the public. And so I wondered how that order was chosen. They are in a circle, but they also appear in an order in the plan. And I had made an earlier comment about ordering them in respect to the survey for how people had ranked them, although at the time, the survey had a little bit different wording, and basically wanted to know how they came, how they're in the order that they appear now, and if there's any possibility for, based on feedback from the community, if they might be reordered.
I think absolutely the order in which they appear is not intended to indicate any kind of higher level of importance. They're also not numbered in that same kind of a way. I think the feeling was that certainly we had heard a lot about mobility, growth, and development, and environment as some of the higher responding topics, and so that's part of the reason why maybe those are more towards the front. But there was not a specific intent to say, mobility first, growth and development second, et cetera, in that order. So that's certainly something that could be adjusted.
So my thought is to look at the community surveys, because we do have so many people, as you highlighted at the beginning, over 1,600, I think, survey responses. And at that early stage, the areas were different, but at the early stage, in terms of the average, so at the time, there were economy, education, mobility, natural environment, safety, and then other where people could specify. It actually looks like natural environment came out slightly ahead of the others, and then safety and mobility. So I think when we get more feedback from the community, the goal, the objectives have changed, but I think potentially reordering some of these would be good, because they do appear in an order, and I think that implies that there is a priority there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
All right. I'm going to plus one, too. I'm kind of disappointed, no, I'm kind of disappointed, I'm really disappointed with the survey. We had a long discussion about what the survey would look like during our last meeting when we talked about this. We talked very specifically about including action items, and the intent was so we could get a sense of what people thought about specific groupings of action items, and I don't see how this does that. So it's really, from my perspective, not what we directed be done. And it's also not clear that we have any demographic or regional data that we can collect with this, too, so we can say, oh, people who are of this particular group feel strongly about this, and these people are feel strongly about that. So we're not really understanding what's happening in the city in terms of what's important to people. And then finally, it's not really clear to me, how do we use this survey to do anything with the strategic plan, to validate it and tell us if we are on the right track? I mean, we are seven people who have some views, but I really was hoping to hear from the other few thousand people who have opinions on this, and I don't think we're going to hear from them. And I'm really concerned, I mean, I'm seriously very concerned about the validity of this and what it does to the value of the plan as a whole.
Right. Other questions, comments? So I will dive into this for a moment. I have been in the past concerned and continue to be concerned when we attempt to quantify self-selected survey results. I had, I have discussed with administration, some interest on my part, speaking as one of seven, for a statistically significant, if you're going to do quantities, because I think quantities on self-selected data is significantly less valuable in a city of 35,000 people. So for what that's worth, qualitative data allows you to, you know, if a lot of people are saying you guys are headed in the wrong direction, that's valuable to me. So I still think qualitative data has value. Qualitative self-selected is fine, but quantitative self-selected, I think, is not, I think is sort of less valuable than we might hope. That's my thoughts.
Councildeputy President Batis.
Thanks for the presentation, David. You know, the one thing that I would start with is that I think overall, when you look at the plan, just how it's laid out on one page and giving the opportunity statement now, being able to read through that, the background, the objectives, and the success measures, I really like the way that this is rolled out, and I think that it's something that is easily understood and could be, you know, it's palatable, and I think that it would be easily understood so we can go forward and get this valuable information from the community that we want to get. And I think that we've done so much work in these areas and put so much effort into that, and I don't want to see us lose momentum in that area. I think that the way the plan looks is really great. I think that what we're hearing is that we could do some more work in terms of how we're going forward with the survey. And I do really like that, aside from the survey, that we're going back to the charrette participants, that we've got the meetings in the boxes, that we're going to the commissions. We've got many different areas that we're hitting, but it sounds like the survey is where I'm hearing that we're getting hung up. But I'm hoping that we're not losing momentum in terms of all the hard work that has been put into this, and how it's looking going out into the community, I think looks great, but I think we have a little more work to do to get everyone where we need to be with the survey.
Other comments? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I'm not a survey expert. There's a lot of material here. I can imagine it's a pretty daunting problem to like lay out, how are you going to put this out there in a form that someone's actually going to spend the right amount of time and give us the kind of input that we can actually work with? So I'm sure that that's not an easy problem and difficult to do and to get right. And as I'm, as I look at the survey, I want to comment on that, is, you're right, it is pretty long in terms of, you have to scroll, you have to read it, people have to, then they offer just a statement. And I certainly can imagine, and now, and I'm limited by my own imagination, of course, I certainly can imagine that we're going to get a lot of statements, just because I think there's basically, what, five or six statement areas? And so I like that prospect, that we're just going to get some open-ended statements. But I've heard from my colleagues, there's a sense, based upon what, I'm not exactly sure, that we could have done a lot better. And it would help me just to understand, how did this, how do you put something like this together? How did you guys go about to put something like this together? Because I assume that our communications department and this team that's working on this is giving this a lot of thought and understand what we're trying to do. So just helping me understand how you went about it would be helpful.
Yes, thank you. So there was a fair amount, and I appreciate the feedback. We had some very similar questions for ourselves about how do we shape up a survey where we can get some good responses? Part of that is that we know that it's, you know, the kind of format for it wants to encourage a lot of content absorption before you can comment on it. We know that there are certain folks who have been more involved with this process throughout the course of the last year, folks like our boards and commissions, some of the charrette participants, our community partners, who've been paying a little bit more attention to it. And so we can imagine that we would be able to get better qualitative data from those folks with an open-ended question. In terms of getting good numbers in terms of quantity of feedback, there's certainly other ways that those could be shaped, but there would need to be fewer questions, probably at a higher level and with less specificity for feedback from the community. And so there was some, a fair amount of discussion about how to balance those things, but still be responsive to the need and desire to have some feedback about the objectives and actions. And as I mentioned before, one of the major concerns was the ability to get good feedback for each of those areas across the full range of them. Certainly, there's no question that you could produce a survey that does that. Whether or not it would be able to provide us with useful information, I think, was part of the concern.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions right now? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll ask if any members of the public want to speak on this issue before we move on.
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrew Street. Couple of issues on, one, there's a real problem with the streaming tonight, apparently. Connie in California is being very frustrated, and I keep checking on my phone, and sometimes it works, and most of the time, it's not, so that's too bad. But anyway, back to the actual issue here. Salmon habitat. Salmon habitat is mentioned basically in the city limits. We could have, and we have excellent salmon habitat from the south city limit to somewhere out the city limits in Lake Samamish, but our salmon runs are failing. We need to be looking a lot broader at the issues instead of, even if we took in the Lake Samamish and dealt with the deal of raising all these salmon to feed the bass in the lake, we would be ahead. But only getting 10% of the salmon from Issaquah to saltwater is a real concern, and we need to be looking a lot more than just the boundaries of Issaquah. Climate change is mentioned once in that we have to adapt to it for our forests, which we have a lot of forests, and the city is great about doing that. We have amazing forests. But climate change is a lot bigger than just adapting so our forests survive and don't burn down or the trees die because it's not the right environment for them any longer. I think we need to be a lot, looking at the much bigger picture and addressing as our citizens on how they interface with the climate, not just acknowledge that it exists, a change is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing anyone else wishing to speak at this time, we will move on. So last, and but certainly not least for the evening, is ID 0403, Council Rules of Procedure, presented by our own city clerk, Tina Eggers.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to pull up the presentation, and I might ask my team if you want to maybe step a little bit closer, so if during the presentation, there's a point of clarification, you're just in a better spot to engage. All right, thank you again, Tina Eggers, City Clerk. And you also have Matt, our management analyst, with us this evening, Tisha, our deputy city clerk, and Autumn, our assistant to the city administrator. So this is part two. This is follow-up from our retreat held earlier this year and is intended to help shape the rules of procedure. Shown on this slide, you have three outstanding items from the retreat. Our presentation will cover these first two items, and time permitting, we'll move on to three. So it's important to point out the criteria that we considered when formulating our recommendations. This is a list that you saw at our retreat as well. Of the two options, option one is our preferred staff recommendation, and this would be the transition to study sessions in lieu of standing committees. You'll see some slides tonight that do have some side-by-side comparisons. In this scenario, option one is the study session format, and we'll talk about option two shortly. So in this model, we recommend bi-monthly study sessions. This first bullet demonstrates that there's some flexibility. You could pick a different day of the week, you could pick a different start time, so that item is flexible. This closely resembles the work session format that you're most familiar with, but the frequency is increased to allow more items to filter through it. The study session format is intended to hear mid- and high-level items for the purpose of your council deliberation, providing staff direction, and mainly for complex items that are subject to future deliberation and your decisions. This model allows for public comments to be received and also the ability to create ad hoc committees, which can be really useful. When utilizing an ad hoc committee, it's typically planned, it's deliberate, it's tied to your work plan, it's known in advance, it's typically limited to one or two items in a year. The ad hoc lives for a specific timeframe duration, and finally, the format is flexible, meaning you might develop it so that a citizen or expert representation could be on that ad hoc group. So here are some of the comments that I just spoke to. Basically, the point that I'd like to make here is that the study sessions allow you, the council, to be informed together, review information together, and deliberate together. And these were some of the ad hoc elements that I highlighted a few minutes ago. Option two is the alternative committee structure. This is similar to today's standing committee structure, this model. This poses the question, are these committees still the right committees to have in place now? This model reduces the number of items going to committee. Here, you would have certain mid-level items. It relies heavily on committee recommendation and assumes that review and recommendation has been delegated to the committee. This model further recommends no substitutions and recommends shifting comments to the full council.
Councilmember Hunt.
Well, this is a comment on the study sessions versus the alternate committee structure. The ad hoc committees on limited occasion, just to clarify, but I don't see why there would be any reason why we can't have ad hoc committees, whichever system we choose.
You currently could do that. That is an option. We have some slides that better direct how you would select that one or two item by which you would want to choose from your work plan that would be a good fit. So this pulls it out more specifically. You'll hear a little bit more about public engagement later in the presentation, if I can move forward.
I have one other question. Is there any difference between the study sessions and our current Is there any difference between the study sessions and our current work sessions?
No, that was my point, that it's very, very similar to that current format. Study session is another word for that. In this case, you would simply, the frequency would increase. And what was the other one? I thought there was two points. Yeah, your frequency would certainly increase.
I have a question about this commit to membership without substitutions. Tell me a little bit more.
Sure. Under this model, we were striving for inadvertent OPMA issues at the full council level, because if you're a committee of three and you've included a fourth member, there could be potential issues there. There was also the element of maybe re-education. So if someone's stepping in, what level of effort is needed to, to bring them sort of up to speed on that item? And then the person who is not there may want to get up to speed and informed upon their return. So it felt, it felt inefficient and could potentially have some inadvertent issues that, that were unintended.
So the administration is recommending that if we were to go forward with option two, that if somebody had to miss a committee meeting, we should only have two council members there, not try to fill that?
Correct. Because it would be a quorum of the group.
It would be a quorum if?
Of the established committee, two would be the quorum. So you therefore could, could meet, conduct business, delegate, review, recommend.
Thank you. Any other questions right now?
Okay. Thank you. So this slide reiterates some of the talking points made a moment ago, and recognizes that the format in this alternative committee structure could be effective when properly used for mid-level items, but could be insufficient, ineffective if items cycle in committee. We compiled some data for you in an attempt to help demonstrate the legislative options that you have, or the ones that we're presenting to you. Tisha put together some examples of some real-life agenda bills that we've had in comparison with another jurisdiction, and what it would look like in this new model versus our current practice.
Hi, everybody. Tisha Geezer, Deputy City Clerk. So I just wanted to make a few points. I'm going to, sorry. Oh, I just used the left. The left button.
Actually, sorry, before you go on, could we actually take a second before we move on to something from the last slide? Since I had a second to think about it. So that thing about cycling, the efficiency of cycling or inefficiency of cycling. So, so things cycle when there's a, there's a council perception that the thing isn't ready, isn't fully cooked, right? So if you cycle with three people, it's not obvious to me that it's less efficient to cycle with three than it is with seven, right? If you, if you say there was a particular bill, and let's say it's gone through a committee three times, going through full council three times doesn't necessarily, I mean, ostensibly, you would still need three touches because the, the bill would not-
Potentially. I suppose one way to look at it would be if, if the committee has been delegated the authority for that review and recommendation, and they're returning with a recommendation, and it's, council is debating the item and feels unprepared to, to make that final decision, should it go back to committee and go through that process again? Or should it really, at that point, stay with the full council, so that the full council can deliberate, full council can hear information, and the full council can make a decision? That was our point on that.
Thank you.
And actually, that question correlates well with some of the points I was going to make. So if you look, take a look at the agenda bill comparison, which is this document here, it was attached to the memo. We wanted to try and give you some real-life examples for the legislative options that we're presenting tonight. At the retreat, if you recall, we did an exercise where we talked about low, mid, and high-level items, and those being categories of decision-making. So a low-level item might be routine, procedural, required. A high-level item might have a really broad scope, it might be creating new policy, it might have big financial implications. And then a mid-level item would fall in between those two. So we use that low, mid, and high-level approach to apply it to a few different examples that we're sharing with you tonight. So the comparison chart included in the materials looks at what we did over the past couple of years, the examples ranged from 2016 to current, and then applies what option one and two might look like for that level of item. It also shows a comparison. The city of Bellevue uses a study session model, and we thought it might be helpful if you could see what their review has looked like on some, not exact, but similar items. And there are a few observations that at least I had when I looked at the data. And one of them is that we have some room to improve our consistency. The paths of these items have varied, and this is why documenting our rules of procedure is so timely, because having a documented process and firming that up is going to make it easier to repeat and make it more predictable for you, for staff, for the public. The second observation is our current referral to committee system is, our committee system is complex. And sort of to Tola's point, we have a formal referral process, items go to committee, they're held only once a month. And if the timeline changes based on the committee's review, the full council has to be brought in, back into that conversation to authorize an extension of time. So it creates a lot of touchpoints and a lot of process. The last point I wanted to make is what I observed, and what you likely will observe too, is that the, the timing is definitely, it's a pretty stark comparison if you consider increasing the frequency of study sessions versus maintaining the standing committees. And the primary reason for that is that if the committee is delving into an issue and has the need for additional review, they need to wait that full month until the next committee meeting before they can address the outstanding issues. If we were to add multiple study sessions in a month, it would allow you to think about what's timely instead of what the subject matter is. So it would give you the flexibility to return, say, at a second study session to finalize or take one last look at an aspect of a decision, again, rather than waiting that full month for the next standing committee meeting. So it allows for that strategic timing. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Tina.
Question before you leave?
Sure.
Tisha?
Yes.
Thank you for explaining, as it is right now, we may, oftentimes, our motions are to send to committee, and then for return for full council at a certain date, and if, and, and sometimes that return is, okay, I'm going to want to send it back. How would that circumstance potentially be different with these study sessions?
Well, so with, so say you, the first study session of the month, the first Monday of the month, you need to delve into, say it's the wireless facility, say it's, you know, anything that you have at one of your current committees. And say that the committee maybe was overall supportive, but wanted a little additional research on one aspect, and wanted an opportunity to review that before brought to the full council. The study session model would allow, now, it depends on the scope, because if staff had to go do a lot of research, they probably wouldn't make the deadline for the third Monday study session. But if they didn't, there might be the opportunity to do that final review, allocate 10 minutes of that study session, and then bring that item back to the full council within a matter of weeks, rather than a month and a half, that's often required if it needs to touch a second subject-specific standing committee. So I see it really expediting timeframes.
Well, thank you. I, I understand that.
No? Right. And so Emily is just bringing up the point that we also, you also, because you're acting as the full council, you don't need to authorize an additional referral. So the reason for that referral piece is the delegation. So it takes that out. Sorry.
That was really what I was wondering. I didn't phrase it that way. But thank you. It's like, hey, we want to spend, let's look at this again in two weeks. Okay, we'll look at it in two weeks.
You have that freedom.
Decision has been made.
Yes.
Rather than, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we did put together three infographics for you. This was also attached to the memo. What we wanted to do was demonstrate sort of those three categories, the low, the mid, the high. The comparison chart took the human service grant recommendation and said, this might be a good example of a low item, and where you could achieve a decision in a fairly quick timeline. This could also be for things that were for accounts payable and payroll, minutes, capital project, bid awards, acceptance, assuming that it's within budget, possibly setting public hearings, dates and times for those, confirming mayor's appointments, and routine grant, applications, submittals, and acceptance. The mid-level, this graphic demonstrates option one and two together. This also shows that option one and two look different, look the most different compared to the others. The study session format demonstrates the biggest efficiency, which is your use of time and use of city resources, while the alternate committee structure format may be susceptible to cycling back. That was the point that we noted earlier. As demonstrated on the comparison chart, mid-level could be the amending the IMC regarding wireless communication facilities and related fees. It could also, this format can also improve timing, as Tisha pointed out, in having more, more study sessions, so you have a better opportunity of, of reaching a quicker timeline. It can simplify and streamline the process for eliminating referrals. That was back to your point or question. Reduces the number of meetings per month as far as council, subcommittee standings, meetings that we have. It shows expertise and input of the full council, and allows public comment to be received and heard by the full council. So those were some points we wanted to make on the mid-level study session format. And then the third infographic was the high level. And as mentioned earlier, the study session format allows council to be informed together, review information together, and deliberate together. This format allows for the occasional ad hoc committee. We show that in the sort of dotted line, because this would be identified in your work plan, that one or two item. It would be known in advance. Possible ad hoc examples would be, maybe you would want to send the development moratorium work plan to an ad hoc, or the senior center management transition, or the long-range capital financing transportation plan. And the example that was provided in the comparison chart that Tisha created was the housing strategy and the DSD permit fee increase. The next two slides are just a quick slide that takes some of that data, two examples. It shows this, in this case, it's the human service grant funding, and it shows currently how many days it took us to move that item through to a decision. And in option one, or option two, it would have a quicker adoption. The second one was showing the DSD permit fee increase, and going from 133 days to 35 in this scenario. And due to the timing of getting items through work session, option two would have a longer We want you to know that the recommendations presented this evening were developed using the criteria that I talked about at the, at the beginning, and of course, with an eye on your work plan. The study session model provides, option one here, provides the most efficient model on our table, and provides some efficient use of your time and city resources. You have-
I'm sorry. Councilmember Ray.
Can you go back down a little section? Because I don't necessarily buy it. As you're saying, all meetings are created equal, and I don't think that that's correct. I think that actually, the committee meetings can be, my experience, more, more, can be briefer than our, our full council sessions, and partly because there's few of us there, and so we can get to things more quickly. So I think that that overstates the, the advantage of there. And also, I think that you're not counting in the three versus seven. So if you were to factor it in terms of people hours, or council member hours instead of hours of duration, I think it changes the numbers fairly dramatically. So I'm not buying that it saves us a lot of time. And as I start listening to what you're talking about, I'm seeing a lot more hours in our work sessions that were, that the agenda would be fuller than it is today. And so it, it seems like we're overstating the, the 32% in my not doing the math, but just looking at it, seems like it's overstating the time savings for us.
Okay. We looked at this very carefully, very thoroughly. We looked at your work plan. We looked and identified 55 items. You guys have, you know, there's an impressive work plan in front of you. We put in to the low, mid, and high, where would these things go? We also had a formula by which we said, what's the average amount of time that a low-level item may need? We did that for mid and high, and we also did a scale for the number of, maybe the first touch versus the second touch. So we did have some, some actual formula that, that we applied. If you go back to this item, this generates more than adequate hours for the work session items to move through. It provides for additional items upon our review and evaluation, and allows for public comment to be received as well.
Councilmember Hunt?
So I, like Councilmember Ray, I had some, I think I have some differences with the assumptions that are underlying these. So we are not currently in a study session model. I think there's the underlying assumption that we would be more efficient meeting altogether as a group of seven than as a group of three. And I don't know that I necessarily feel that that is the case. I, I don't feel that that's the case, rather. And then I, I also think there's an assumption that if we have less touches, it in fact showed that bar chart with touches, that less touches is a better outcome for items. I also don't agree with that necessarily. And I don't think that moving items through the process necessarily means that we come to a better decision in the end. So I think a lot of these metrics, I'm just, I'm not relating to. I think that there, I, I also, I think the problem isn't clearly defined what problem we're trying to solve with these changes. So a lot of the metrics in terms of reducing touches, reducing the number of discussions, I don't know that that helps us get to a better outcome.
Councilmember Goodman?
Part of the question was already asked.
Any other questions or comments right now? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. In your recommended option, what would happen to meetings like tonight? Because what I see is regular business meetings and committee meetings. We already have a work session meeting, so where would these things go?
Like this conversation?
Well, this happens to be on the agenda tonight.
Right.
Like earlier, we heard, we got some updates. I'm just saying, there's, this material and the agendas for our work sessions today, and what we do in our work sessions.
It would have a similar feel to a work session, yes. We, I mean, we haven't talked about public engagement, but clerk's office would recommend, you know, displaying where audience comments would be shown on the agenda. We would recommend encouraging its placement at the start of the meeting.
I think it's more of the agenda items. So if I- So if I think about it this way, we have three standing committees now, and there will be anywhere from one to four agenda items per month, per meeting. Could be a little bit higher, but there's always at least one. So let's say there's an average of three, just doing a number. So there's, and there's, so there's nine issues, and then we have maybe three or four on this one. So there's going to be 10 or 12 issues a month. And maybe a few fewer, but 10 to 12, let's just say a range. So I, now I'm hearing that within two work sessions, we'll get the same amount of work done. And I understand the flow. You've outlined that very clearly, like why it may calendar day-wise not take as long. But I, but I think the, when I just think about it that way, about the number of agenda items and the time we take now, so did you think about it that way? And are you saying, yeah, you still think, did you come up with a number? You think, yeah, well, we still think you can do those 10 to 12 in these two work sessions or study sessions or whatever you want to call them?
We looked at the work plan items and did a thorough review of where would these really land. And this mid-level and high level would be that work session format or study session format.
Maybe Tina, are you saying with this, so you're right, I didn't really consider this. Are you saying this low, mid, and high would actually take items off the agenda?
Yes.
And they would just be part of regular business like on consent?
Correct.
So the number may actually reduce. It may not be that 10 to 12?
Correct.
Okay. There is one other factor. I don't know how you measure this. It is our time outside of this meeting?
Yeah.
And I, I think, I'll say this on the record, that the committees that I'm in and the issues that are in front of that committee, I spend more time preparing for those than for the other issues that aren't in my committee. I just do. So this is kind of daunting to me that I, to think that that same level of preparation now across all of that. So maybe, maybe it's fewer issues. But, so I'm, I'm having a hard time with that by itself, because it's just more time outside of this. And then the other thing, and this is going to seem really counterintuitive as well, is that, you know, sometimes I think that long time that we have, I can play to my advantage and to the issue's advantage, because it does have more airtime. There is more time for thoughts to progress, information to be, you know, kind of ingested and understood, and kind of a preference and a policy formation. You have that time. Now, I've been in this system, we've been working that way, maybe I've just kind of adapted to all of this. But it certainly, it certainly seems that way. And it's interesting, you brought up the one about the wireless communication and, you know, outside that we originally said go to two touches, and I forget why, in committee. And then we thought we were done, but we're not done. It's going back, got that. And, and part of my thinking, and I didn't say this before, was, you know, something could happen out there outside of us, and we're giving it a little bit more time before we take some action, and something outside of our control, outside of the city of Isaguac could actually happen. And you know what? I'm glad we didn't finish that up, because now we have something new to respond to. And like, that one for me really wasn't time urgent. Wireless one really isn't time urgent. In fact, I'd kind of, I kept, you know, I kind of like, I would like, you know, if that took longer and longer. We didn't really have that conversation, but that's where my mind was. So those are, so those, that's where I am with this thing, is that I, I'm trying to understand what this plan would mean in terms of demand on my time outside of the meeting structures that you have. And, and I have to also decide if I think that, that going through the process, I'm not, I don't really think it's going to erode the quality of our decisions because we do it faster. We're just creating shorter gaps between the times that we talk about things. And, and just that, so it's just, and it's actually those shorter gaps is what I'm trying to weigh, because there's some value, and sometimes there being more time between them. So those are, those are, that's how I'm viewing this recommendation right now. Thank you for your information.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
Thanks for the presentation tonight. I, I can definitely see, I'm more, just have a comment, and I'm just talking it through, talking out loud, but I can definitely see the pros and cons with, with, with all of this. And definitely what has been presented in terms of the examples and getting us to think about the low, medium, and the high, and having more coming through on consent and seeing the, being able to work through things more quickly is compelling when you're looking at that data. But I have to say that I'm echoing a little bit of Councilmember Winterstein's thought process in terms of not having that committee structure and seeing how, how many things would, would, would come forward on the agenda. And then the time that, that, that I think probably, I won't speak for everyone here, but when you're in the committee, the committee structure, you're taking a lot of time to do a deep dive within those issues, and then having the ability to do sort of that deep dive all the way across. Not that you're not always doing that, but you just, you're, you're taking that added time. So I'm still a little confused in my mind about having it, having it be less time, and also just the amount that we would cover in a work session, and giving all of that the time that is needed. Because right now, we're, we're breaking those topics apart and being able to give them adequate time. And now it seems like we're condensing all of those, you know, several topics into one meeting. So I'm just, I'm still just sort of playing it through. I know that we've, we've got examples of cities that
Sure.
do this differently. But, but also, I guess I would, I would ask too, is, is there also a world where we, if we were to stay within the committee structure, but then started working through things a little bit differently in terms of how we're looking at low, medium, and high, and how, what, what items are going to consent and what items are not?
Yes, we certainly want clarity.
Like kind of a halfway point there.
Yes. We do have more presentation to work through before we get to deliberation, but I, I don't want to...
Thank you for clarifying, but as long as we're not yet deliberating the issue, other questions and comments?
I'll wait.
Okay. So I, questions around, do you have an idea how long the studies, typical study sessions would be? Does this data parse for us, how long study sessions would be?
Did we factor the study session at three hours?
Yeah. So these numbers would reflect three-hour study sessions. Okay, I'll save the rest of my comments for later. Councilmember Goodman.
What would become of committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole is quarterly informational. We didn't provide a recommendation at this time, so it would be, remain as is unless you wanted to do something different.
But we could make it go away.
Good. All right. Moving on, Matt will lead us through the public engagement portion of the presentation.
Good evening, Council. City Administrator, Matt Morne, Special Projects Manager. The second portion of our presentation tonight really focuses on public participation, specifically public comment, and how it fits into the city's legislative process. So I want to take a moment to go through this section before we tease out recommendations for your consideration tonight. Local governments are well-served when public engagement is meaningful, and it encourages a broad spectrum of people to participate before decision points facing elected representatives. When done right, cities not only create opportunities for people to bring their ideas, their questions and concerns to government, but also for the government to go directly to people. Public comment at the dais is one of many tools to engage the public. This was not always the case. Cities previously relied primarily on people coming to speak at meetings as the primary means of engagement. But in today's fast-paced world, people's spare time is very limited. So what we found is that local governments have come to terms with the notion that relying on people to come to us is outdated. This results in significant segments of the community being left out of the decision-making process. Representatives tend to hear from a self-selecting group of people who generally have the time to attend meetings. So this suite of tools outline ways that government can, can go and is currently going to people. The vast majority of policy decisions facing Washington's 281 local governments are not ripe for civic engagement. Many of the decisions facing councils are mechanistic. They involve the day-to-day operations of providing public goods and services and do not necessitate extensive investment in civic engagement. By design, the public entrusts representatives to work with staff and levy efficient, effective, and equitable policy decisions for the community. That is the charge of representative democracy. When staff, council, or the community seek additional public input, this tool guides how to effectively get it. It illustrates how community involvement scales from sharing information with the public to directly collaborating with them. This sampling of data from the communications team over the past three years conveys the kind of public engagement that can be reached by going directly to the community, rather than expecting the community to come to government. For example, the Dog Park online survey yielded community input equivalent to nearly 10 hours of public comment. The parking study is another example of a public policy issue people felt very passionate about. So staff worked closely with the community to ensure various ideas and opinions were not only heard, but integrated into the parking studies recommendations for council. So it's, it's important to note here that these alternative tools to engage members of the community are not meant to replace public comment. These, they simply create opportunities for people who cannot attend a public meeting to engage before council makes a decision. So I just want to, I want to clarify that point. During the February retreat, council inquired how neighboring cities manage public comment at the committee level, and this graphic illustrates our findings. Based on these findings and best practices, staff recommends that council shift public comment to full council forums. With council direction, staff would refine and continue to adapt engagement practices. Staff has many ideas that can be further developed based on direction tonight. An ongoing component of the public engagement toolkit would be to continue the communications team's excellent work to, and educate residents when and how they can provide input before council decision points. Doing so simplifies the current process for people who make time to speak in front of their elected representatives. Community members passionate about an item before the council can easily, can more easily anticipate when and where to speak. So if I'm passionate about an item that is facing council, I can reliably anticipate when to come to a council meeting, rather than have to track how many work sessions, how many, excuse me, how many committee meetings are being held. And that could result in having to speak a number of times with the hope that my comments don't fall to the wayside of what could be an extended decision-making process. So what, the result of that would be a more predictable and, and hopefully more powerful public comment component. For the legislative process, staff recommends council sunset standing committees, meet for regular meetings on the first and third week, and study sessions on the second and fourth week of every month. This option yields more flexibility. It reduces the amount of time for adoption without losing touch points, as was kind of a point out in Tisha's Agenda Bill comparison chart. Public comment would shift to beginning of meetings, which would be indicated on the It is good practice for local governments to go through a tune-up every three to five years, especially in communities growing at the pace that we're seeing here in Isaguac, begging the question, can we do things better? Can we do things more efficiently? And staff has observed opportunities for us to do things better and do things differently, and that is the basis for this recommendation. We completed an expansive review of empirical data of how the legislative process has performed here in Isaguac, and we've referenced practices in neighboring communities and best practices in general. And so on that basis, we recommend the study session legislative process format. It is designed to be more efficient and effective with council's time and city resources. It simplifies public comment and takes the statement "it depends" out of the legislative process. It is timely. As the city continues its transition from a small town to a medium-sized city, and as outlined earlier this evening with a strategic plan, it sets the council up for success as the city embarks on a substantial work plan. And it takes advantage of the council's full skill set and depth of experience.
Sorry, before you move on, I have a, have a question. So an element that we haven't talked about is the assumption in the earlier notes about moving public comment out of committees. If you do that, can you explain why the alternate committee structure would be moderate risk for compliance and difficult to monitor, if in fact we accepted not taking public comment in committee?
Certainly, I can answer that. So that was listed as moderate. It's difficult to monitor. The rationale behind that was if it's an item that's in committee and you have three members discussing, including a fourth council member, would be a violation of the, of council's OPMA threshold. So it was just noted as moderate. Maybe it's low to moderate's the right category for it, but we, we didn't want to lose sight of it.
Okay. But, but your recommendation was also to not have replacements, so that the alternate committee structure, if we moved forward with that option, your recommendation would be to not take public comment
Correct.
and not allow substitutions. And in that case, is it still moderate risk and difficult to monitor?
Only from the perspective of the top-level OPMA component.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So, so long as the committee isn't discussing their items before they return to the, to the full council.
Offline.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Other questions before we move on? Okay.
So we're at the point of the presentation where your feedback is wel, welcome, and looking for any direction you can provide on what those next steps may be. Some of the things we posed were, you know, what's your feedback? Are you ready to provide direction? And if you need more time, what might that look like? So...
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Tina, can I ask you a question about, can we go to the Agenda Bill process comparison chart? And I'm looking at the human services grant funding recommendations.
Are we doing the infographics, these guys? Oh, Tisha's table? Sure. I just would need to pull that up from here.
Thanks. So the, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the, what the actual process would look like with study sessions. So the first question I have is, are human services grant funding, we're, those are our own grants. When we're comparing them to Bellevue, CDBG, are these Bellevue, is this Bellevue money or is this like federal block grants?
We, we tried to find a similar comparison. It may not be identical.
Okay. So my first comment is, there might be less conversation, deliberation that needs to go, that would go into, just less flexibility when, I think, when you're getting CDBG money. So that might be, that might lend itself to a one-day decision-making process. But let's start with how the agenda, how this would happen. So the Agenda Bill... So the Agenda Bill, I guess the first touch, so to speak, would be Agenda Bill 7651 on the consent agenda, and it refers it to a study session?
No, we wouldn't have referrals.
There wouldn't be any referrals?
In this case, I don't know that we would recommend a study session. If it's a low item, you might hear it under regular business, or you might have been prepped with something in advance through the packet. It could also fall under consent.
Okay, sorry, my bad. So this one...
This is actual. This is what happened with this A B. So it took 35 days to go through and return.
But look at Option 1, study session, one day.
Correct.
Study session not needing, regular council meeting. So what happens is the proposal here under Option 1, study session, is Agenda Bill 7651 comes, it's on maybe consent, it says regular council meeting.
Yeah, consent or regular, depending on if discussion was necessary and council action at that time.
Okay, so I can, I would imagine that there are some council members and members of the public who wouldn't like that. So...
Again, this was just to demonstrate a low-level item that met the routine, non-controversial timing perspective.
Recommended by the city commission.
Right, so this was a commission of the city that had made a recommendation.
Okay, so one option, so it seems to me that maybe this doesn't give the public significant amount of time to provide any feedback to the council if they want to. So could one option be, there's always a first touch, at least for some Agenda, for Agenda Bills, all Agenda Bills?
I wouldn't recommend that.
No?
In order to make decisions and move forward and the work that we do, there's always Agenda Bills that will require council action that don't require that second touch. We provided some examples earlier, and we recognize that not everything will fit under this, but of those that do, we should be able to make decisions and move on so that we can deal with those mid to high-level items.
Okay, so I'm not necessarily opposed to the recommendation to study sessions, but change is always difficult, and it's hard to anticipate where we might hit bumps in the roads or bumps in the road or things we might not really like or things we might want to tweak. What's the possibility of trying it out? So rather than just, we'll change like in Q2, which is the recommendation, why couldn't we try some Agenda Bills out and see how it works?
Well, I looked at my administrator. I, it's, I think it would be something hard to pilot and then undo. I think there should be some grace of trying it out and revisiting and modifying it to work better. I think it will be hard to transition. I think if, in order to ensure that the work plan items get done, it might be hard to have this dual committees and still occurring and then this side test.
Or what if we started with the low-level items and started to move those over more to consent and not going to committee? And started with that, and maybe took a few Agenda Bills that were mid and high and identified those as going through the new recommended process.
Right, and I think if I'm correct, the CIP was an example of not going through the committee process and staying at the whole council level. Previously, that had veered off into one to three committees all at the same time, and as you developed your new CIP, it stayed at the whole council level.
Anyway, I'm trying to find a way that we're not at a yes or a no, because I know there's, not everybody is necessarily in favor at this point, and I'm just looking for a way to try something different and see if it's, rather than just say no. I think it's an interesting proposition.
Councilmember Walsh.
So I wasn't here at the beginning of this discussion or when you guys went on your retreat, so I wanted to just take a step back to why this was coming up. Because I think I've heard we need to work on some compliance issues with OPMA and achieving public comment, and I think that part is pretty clear. I think it sounds like staff wants to increase some efficiency on number of meetings, and so that's coming across. I'm feeling a little bit of pushback. Trying to understand on one of the slides, the transparent, credible, and participatory, because I'm not sure how those differ between the two and kind of what the goal is on making, why we would need to make a change in order to achieve more transparency or credibility. Not really getting that.
So one of the reasons that the study session model has sort of arisen is the concern about removing public comment from the committee level. The study session model allows you to accept public comment at any of your council forums at any time. So for that reason, that kind of hits more on the participatory, efficient, the transparent and credible. Yeah, I guess I'll speak, I'll stick with the public comment and also with this bigger conversation about our rules of procedure and wanting to, it feels like an opportunity to share what some other cities are doing and some efficiencies that we see possible of your time, of staff resources. And honestly, the public can be sort of confused by our fairly complex process. And so I think thinking about communicating it to them and communicating their opportunity to be involved, from my perspective, I see some real benefits to a flattening and simplifying of the process.
So I actually see kind of the converse when I'm talking, when I'm thinking about it from the public's perspective. I went through and looked at Bellevue and Kirkland and Redmond and Bothell's city council website pages, and I was trying to think, how do I engage with those city councils if I had a concern? The thing is, the committees are labeled what they're for. So I know if I have a problem with traffic, I'm going to go to transportation committee. If I have a problem with the police, I'm going to go to a safety committee. Whereas a study session has no sense of that. And I think the only way you could adjust that is by saying the study session on the first Monday or whatever it is would be about subject X and Y, but that eliminates our agility and ability to come back to something at the next study session if we're saying we talk about traffic on the first Monday. So I have a little bit of concern with the idea of moving away from something that's labeled and a little bit easier, I think, to understand from a public perspective, to something that, to me, in some ways either seems not necessarily less transparent but less clear to the public coming into it for the first time.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
So this question for you all. So if we go with the study session option, and we have a, let's pick a medium thing like amending the wireless communications facilities. So the first time that that would show up in the public sphere would be when it appeared on the agenda for the study session, because there would be no previous referral. So one of the things that I think is actually good is when we do committee referrals, it puts the notion that we're going to be talking about something into the public sphere in advance of us talking about it. And my fear is, I don't want to give this sense that in the, under the banner of we're being very efficient, that we become ineffective and we're not giving people in the community time to see what we are contemplating doing. And by having that delay, we provide time to contemplate what it is we are, we give people time to absorb what we are contemplating to do.
Council President.
It's your city administrator, Moon.
I just want to add a note for information purposes. City administration has decided that we're approaching, bringing issues to council in a slightly different way. Whereas previously, we have crafted an Agenda Bill and put that on the council agenda, perhaps for referral to committee or perhaps to stay-at-work session with the full council. We are now instructing our staff in advance of drafting an Agenda Bill to simply draft a memo, a memo that lays out policy considerations, that gives you background data, serves as a vehicle to share information and to have you react to it and the public react to it so that we get that input, and then we can go and craft an Agenda Bill with an ordinance, a resolution, allocation, whatever the ultimate outcome is, and have that clarity on what the council wishes to achieve and how. And so in that system, we are now taking those memos directly to the committees, and we're starting the conversation there. Those memos are not referred. So I just wanted to be clear that even today, we have stopped referring all items to committee, and sometimes we are taking items directly to committee in the form of memos, and then after those conversations, then we are bringing Agenda Bills through the normal way that we have.
But I'd kind of like to get through everybody once first before we get to second comments from people, so, Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Stacy, I appreciate your emphasis or your attempt to like, is there a way that we can ease our way into that? I was thinking along those same lines, so I appreciate you verbalizing, you know, one idea. And I do appreciate the answers that we've got to the questions that we have. So I've decided on this one, I'm not going to fear the unknown, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak about it earlier. For me, my decision-making process many times is a chance to talk about it once, not just to ask questions, but to make statements, see how they sound, get a response to that, get an opportunity to think about it and reflect upon that. That process works really well for me. Having said all that, I don't really know what the demand of my time outside of this would be, but I'm not going to fear it. I see clear, I think in this structure and predictiveness of when and where, there's a lot of value. And short of finding, and Stacy, your question, your comment, I may have a chance to think about, is there a way to maybe ease into this? And so with all of that, I'm, I would be open, I'm open to trying this. I'm absolutely open to trying this. So I'm, I'd say that the, and I'd say that, you know, Monday nights, things are happening. You know where they're going to happen. I like the idea that I would hear everybody's comments. And I don't know what it means to me outside of this meeting yet, but those advantages to the predictability where and when, and I would think, my one ask would be, I think Chris was touching upon this, that, that yes, when we bring it in, something into the regular agenda for referral to a committee, this is the first notification. That means that notification is happening potentially weeks before we actually discuss it, and somehow that notification for what might happen in a work session is still happening a week or two before we're going to discuss it, as long as that can happen. And then, think about that, then I think it would be addressing what is a valid concern.
Councilmembers Hunter, Council Deputy President Batiste.
I have a question first, and then I have a couple of comments. So the question is, currently in our committee structure, we make recommendations, and then the recommendations are reported back by the chair to the full council, and I wondered what that looks like when there's all seven of us discussing and then all seven of us are going to make the decision at the regular meeting. So what happens with that recommendation process? It's a question for somebody.
Why don't you start?
Having worked in this model a couple of different places, what I have experienced, and this probably isn't the full set of possibilities, but the study session concludes when the council feels it's ready with not necessarily a formal vote, but the same sort of indication, like this is what we want to see, we're ready to have an ordinance brought forward, and these are the main things that we want to achieve in it. Or yes, we're on board with shaping up a policy that addresses these issues in this way. And we will have, we, there's a lot that we are going to have to work through and get better at, and part of it is that final moment in the meeting where we test what we've heard, and we say back to you, okay, we heard you want a policy that has these four things. Is that correct? And we ask you to say yea or nay to that. That's not necessarily a vote on the policy itself, but it's enough direction then for us to go and craft the Agenda Bill to take through that formal legislative action.
I guess that's, I mean, the other parts of this, I guess, is that our work sessions are the same thing effectively as study sessions, so...
Correct.
We can sort of think about how the study, how the work sessions currently work in terms of not having a formal recommendation, but we have a conversation. There's a big unknown for me about how it works in practice when we don't have the recommendations of the committee, but that's going to be an unknown. And then I have some comments, I don't know if we want to go to, do you prefer to go to other people's questions or...
You can cede, you can cede your time and we can come back to you later in the next round if you want.
Okay, I'll do that.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
So I just have some follow-up comments. I think that Councilmember Goodman did a really good job verbalizing it. I was starting to head down that pathway in terms of looking at if there was an interim step or a way that we could pilot or try this out. And I too am, I'm not, especially as I look at what we're trying to achieve, and I'm all for if we're trying to be more efficient and we can move through things the way that we need to, as long as we're, as long as we have the opportunity to hear from the community and everyone feels like they have the opportunity to work through the issues. So I'm not opposed to this, but I, but if it ends that we're, that we're not in support of this, then I would be interested to look at something halfway in between where we could maybe do a pilot program and see how it feels. There are definitely still some questions in my mind, and we've talked about it a little bit in terms of when we're in the smaller committee session, we're able to talk it through at such great depth and then come to a consensus, and that's coming back to council. And sometimes when we have everyone around the table, I think sometimes it's a little bit more difficult. bit more difficult to say, to look at it and say, well, where exactly are we? So just some clarification around that, if we're not getting a report out from a committee or a chair, that would probably help me a lot.
So, sort of six things from least to most. One thing, I mean, I'm not excited about potentially moving away from having committees. First off, the, one of the things when I was, took over as council president, you know, this whole head-scratcher thing, I think that we have an opportunity with having technical focuses within the three subcommittees that we have of reducing the number of head-scratcher moments. And I think I've, I think that the folks have done a good job of stepping up and when people's name had been on bills, understanding what the issues are that are coming. And I have concerns about how this new structure would work. I suspect that having a committee structure gives us reserve capacity, that when big issues come up for full council, that we have the big, you know, once-a-week meetings, we can carve extra time out for big things that come up, like strategic plans. I'm not so sure we would have that reserve capability if we went to a study session. Unintended consequences, there's just little things that are nits for me, but like the human services grant funding, that's an example of something that I think is really important to have in committee. I think as a community to understand where our city, if we say we're spending $10 per person to support human services in our city, I think that having a time and a place where those folks come forward and the community sees where that money is being spent and that it's being spent wisely, and that's just an example of something that I think is valuable. But is it something that I would want all seven of us sitting through in a study session? I'm not sure it meets, I'm not sure, it's a higher bar, right, versus three people who have said that they're willing to focus this on, sorry, on services and safety. So, next, the, I think the committee structure, the biggest issues to me are, what do you do as a community when you have tough issues in front of you? And it's really critical that the public be able to look you in the eye and know that you know what they think. And I think the committee structure has been really beneficial. I wrote down a list, senior center, medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, cell sites, Raleigh DA, Costco DA, these are all things that many details got hammered out in committee before they came before the full council and the public had enough time to digest these issues. I'm really proud just to pick two of, that we led the way on medical marijuana and recreational marijuana because we had the time to address the public safety issues that our community might have choked on if we had moved more quickly. The other thing about committees and challenging issues, and I think this is super, super important, is that the public gets to hear about the issue before they make public comment, right? So if you come to a committee meeting, you get to hear the staff presentation before you make your public comment versus a situation where potentially you're making public comment at the beginning of a public meeting where there's only going to be one touch. I think that provides so much better clarity for the public on the issue and allows them to focus their feedback on the parts that are, at the end of the day, still problematic for them. And then finally, this, I'm sorry, but this argument that it's simpler and more efficient for the public to have fewer opportunities for public comment at council, I just, I don't see it all. All the other options for public engagement are awesome, they're all still totally capable. You can do that either way, you can have all the other, all the other great forms of civic engagement that we have, but, you know, less is less, less is not more. And this idea that, you know, well, you know, some other cities don't have it, so our public won't notice it. I mean, I've just seen in committee, once again, so many times where that ability for the, the public just doesn't have the same level of ability to get to the meat of the issues when it's a four-hour full council meeting with all seven of us up on the dais and we have eight things to get through. I mean, it's just, it's not the same experience as it is in committee. So, for all those reasons, I mean, would the sky fall if we moved to study sessions? No, but I think it would be a step backwards in our ability to handle tough issues with the support of our community. With that, I will bring it back to Stacy.
Sure, thanks. So, the human services grants, just to comment on that. So, this is for Tisha Tina. So, is that an example of a low-level item that this council during our last retreat decided, or does this model reflect what the council's feedback was when we did that exercise and then we redid that exercise?
This is not an exact example from the exercise. So some of the logic in putting it in the low level is even though it wasn't delegated to an ad hoc committee, it was, that process is delegated to one of our standing boards and commissions, which you have some appointment authority over. And I noticed this theme in looking at Bellevue as well, that when they were relying on a work product coming out of another group, it tended to reduce the overall council touchpoints. So that was the rationale, but it was not in your exercise?
Sure, and I didn't necessarily mean specifically human services grants, but I recall one of the
Do you have the last question?
Questions or stickies being?
Yes.
Examples of what we might call a low-level item.
If you, sure.
And the council, I recall that, or tell me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that what you're recommending here reflects what also the feedback that the council gave you.
Correct. And we looked at the majority. So, the low-level examples, since the example that you were, the human service grant was in that low-level category, the four that were the result of the retreat exercise were the annual arch work plan approval, awarding bid in wastewater pump replacement, extension of existing inter-agency, inter-locals or MOUs, and approval of grant application for neighborhood arts pilot program.
Thanks. Emily, when you talked about memos, so a memo might come out on a work session agenda without being on, without being referred from a council agenda. So the memo goes to work session, it's an ID maybe, and then what? Then what happens? What's the, tell me the life cycle of that memo-turned-agenda bill?
Sure, I think it will depend on the subject matter. Thank you for an opportunity to also talk about how we could highlight that that item is coming to a study session or a work session. We have vehicles right now, they show up from time to time on the planning calendar. We could do something differently to share upcoming or anticipated items for study sessions or work sessions. So I think it depends on the subject, but we would attempt on the first study session to say, here's our thoughts on how we might proceed with this item. We're going to tonight kind of give the high-level overview, all the data and background, and we're going to start with posing a few policy questions to get the dialogue going. So if it was more complex, we might do that, we might also bring some policy analysis for you, look at different options and alternatives, and have you just discuss that. And then we might say, you know, the next time we will try to narrow it, we will try to narrow it in and focus on those one or two pieces that you might want, you might be more interested in. And then, as many times as it takes at study session, you know, when we feel like we have landed on some clarity and we have kind of majority consensus about how to shape up an agenda bill, and the first question on that is, shall we shape it up into an agenda bill? Are you feeling confident enough that you want to take this on and direct, you know, a certain outcome, certain policy, then at that moment, then we would say, this is what we intend to shape up into an agenda bill based on what we have heard?
Thank you. Yep. And I guess the other comment I have about efficiency, and I, you know, I don't disagree with all the comments, concerns about efficiencies being feeling like, sounding like it's to, has the unintended consequence of maybe cutting out public, you know, opportunities for the public. I don't quite see it that way. But the comment I want to make is, we also have an obligation as council members to be efficient for the public and to do our work efficiently and to not waste resources on an inefficient system because that is potentially a lot of resources, and resources translates into a lot of money. So I see it as an opportunity to be more efficient with our staff time and senior leadership's time. And if we can create a system that is also helpful to the public so they know where to engage, and I think, I don't think we're all necessarily clear about how that would happen. I just see that it's a, that, I see it as a potential win-win, and I'm actually kind of excited about trying it out.
Councilmember Ray.
So I have a question, and it's maybe one I just don't understand. So if we have study sessions now as opposed to work sessions, so today our work sessions and our committee of the whole sessions are used really primarily for informational stuff. I'm getting a no, we don't use those primarily for informational stuff today? Somebody answer that question.
City Administrator.
We use work sessions for a variety of things, and we actually have kind of clouded what a committee of the whole is for as well.
Let me state that differently, we don't take action at work sessions
That's correct.
And committee of the wholes. So if we were to have study sessions, and let me back that up a second, because I think there's a point I'm trying to make here, which is, we don't take action at work sessions today, and we don't take action at committee of the wholes today. And primarily what we see, in my experience, at those sessions are not agenda bills. We have agenda bills that come to work sessions today? We do. And the purpose of those is really to vet them.
And so, you know, get the temperature?
And so what we're really suggesting here with the study session is, we would use that model not for some agenda bills, but for all agenda bills.
I think so.
High and medium, everything but low?
Correct, high and medium.
Okay. Great, thanks. That's, I was just trying to differentiate what we're doing now from what's being proposed.
Councilmember Winterstein, you look poised.
I was leaning toward my mic, thank you. I appreciate that, Chris, I think that clarity is really good. I kind of had that same question, like what would happen to the, what we were doing tonight? And I'll just take it back really quick, when we, it was back in around 2012 when we introduced, or 13, the work session, the idea was that there are certain policy issues that are best formed while all seven people were participating rather than just a subset of three. And the idea was that was those really high ones that would come through here because we wanted all seven informing the policy. And I, so Stacy, again, well said, I liked the way you, you found some really good words in there that we also have an obligation, you know, to the public in working efficiently. And that is, that is a way of saying the way I see this. There is, we don't have a transparency problem and we're not trying to solve it. We don't have a credibility problem and we're not trying to solve it. We don't really have a participatory problem and we're not trying to solve it, right? Can we work more efficient? We're getting a recommendation that says we can. Can we eliminate and lower risk for compliance? Yes, we can, we're getting a recommendation for how to do that. I think with ensuring that there's enough advanced notification about issues and when they're going to show up, for those who do want to speak in public, that this, if you just add up hours and meeting opportunities, maybe, yeah, less is less, but it's still, it's still there. And being, I think, the time and date certain is better for the public rather than what night of the week where it is. And that may, but so, I'm also, even though there may be members of the public that are used to our schedule and know where and when, I'm going to give them credit that most of the public can very easily adopt to a new structure and know it's Monday night and the second and third, or the, like, the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So I think, I think this could be pretty easily adopted and taken advantage. So for all of those reasons, like I said, I'm, the unknown for me is, I'm repeating myself, how much more work outside of this? I'm hearing there's an attempt at tuning that by what we talked about, this high, medium, and low, and you've taken our input on some of those things. So I'm reiterating my favor of moving forward with this proposal.
Other comment? Councilmember Hunt. Oh, I couldn't, I didn't see a bye signal. Councilmember Hunt.
Okay, thank you. So, I, I am, I would like to have a more efficient system, I think that's very valuable. I guess where I've landed is that I am currently unconvinced that the reasons that the system given would necessarily be more efficient. So one of the things that it relies on is that things don't spiral in the work sessions. And I don't know that having all seven of us discuss an item leads to less spiraling than having three of us discuss an item. I think that sometimes we spiral because other things happen outside of our control or other information comes up, or maybe we come up, I mean, oftentimes we come up with a question that we want more information about that can't be provided at that particular meeting, and then we're going to need to send it back to another meeting. So I, I think that it does cut out that one referral step, but I also, I think that the efficiencies, as far as I could tell, where there's no circling, it seems like it's overstated in these, in this presentation. And so it's a very strong recommendation, the way it's put forward, but I think that there are some assumptions in there that I just don't resonate with me. And then, I also am concerned that when all seven of us are always, so I think that, Councilmember Winterstein spoke to this in a different way, but if we're all working on all items that come forward, we're also spread a bit thinner, I think, because we are all looking at all of the items that are before us rather than having some groups do work in committee and then the rest of the council can look at that recommendation and draw from those conversations, which I find really, really valuable. So I'm concerned about those recommendations going away and a bit concerned about the process that we would come to recommendations at work session, study session type meetings. And I, the one thing that I do think is a benefit of having the study sessions versus the committee structure is the public comment at every meeting. Because regardless of which option we choose from these two options that are being presented versus our current meeting, there will be less opportunities for public comment because we'll either have less meetings, as was shown with the study sessions, or we'll have less meetings with public comment because we'll be directing the public comment from the committees to the other, to the regular meetings. So that brings me to one point, which we didn't discuss, but which is in the memo, which is about the time that's being given to the public engagement. So I do think that most people take less than three minutes. There was a comment made about it being a self-selecting group of people. I think we get all kinds of, we get members of the community that are coming for a particular issue, or sometimes they're more involved over the long term, but we get a lot of people that come and make public comment. Sometimes I think they have to get a babysitter, they have to line up other, they have to figure out the transportation to get here, they're making the time to come to talk to us. So I think either way, we're reducing the number of public engagement touches, so I would like to make sure that we, my preference would be to have that five minutes because I think that most people take less than five minutes. I think most people take about three minutes, but to cut them off, I think, is less friendly. And I think people don't like, a lot of people are not good public speakers or don't feel that they're good public speakers. And so giving them that, not cutting them off at three minutes is, I think, a friendlier option. So I would prefer that. It didn't come up in the rest of our discussion, but it's in It didn't come up in the rest of our discussion, but it's in the memo. And then, the last thing, I think, is that I, I, I appreciate that we're considering all these different things. The examples given, I don't know that they, I guess, if, if we're considering the study session, it seems like a lot of us are considering that. I would like to think more about the ad hoc committees. So maybe we could find, find a hybrid which has a little bit more of our smaller discussions in those ad hocks and maybe we could think about that more. I don't think we discussed that too much about how that would look, but that, I think, might be a hybrid approach that could help mitigate some of the concerns that some of us have about all study sessions.
Thanks. Councilmember Walsh.
So I think generally I'm in favor of moving toward the study sessions for, if only the fact that it allows public comment continuing on in those sessions. It preserves that. The predictability on the same night and time is very helpful, but conversely, like I said before, I do have some concerns that if I want to talk about a transportation thing, how am I going to figure out on the agenda when you're talking about it or anything? So I would ask the staff to just take a look at some of the other cities, how they present their information on the website and see if there's a way that we can maybe take some of the plain language version of what's on our planning calendar and put it on the website that says, hey, you want to talk about this? Come to this meeting. You want to talk about this? Come to this meeting. And similarly, we saw in here, we get a lot of response on surveys if we present them well and on a subject that people care about. And so, knowing that public comment might end up being only on a Monday night when lots of people might not be able to make it, it would be my preference that we maybe invest some of our staff time in making sure that we have a really good way of reading surveys and engaging the public that way.
Council Deputy President Batiste, do you have any other comments?
Okay. Couple of things. I agree generally with the five minutes for comment. I think there needs to be a mechanism for an exception and this is almost a little tongue in cheek, but something like, if you have to open the doors to accommodate the public, we could consider three minutes. I mean, that shouldn't literally be the criteria, but there should be some criteria, but I, I also support the idea of five. Public comment in committee, so, you know, it's interesting, I think, you know, everybody comes away from retreats differently. I sort of thought one of the things we were trying to figure out was, you know, we had had this proposal for study sessions in our retreat and council wasn't ready to go there. And so I thought it was sort of, one of the things was to try to find a hybrid that would get as close to being able to allow us to take public comment in committee as we could while, I mean, we're basically retaining the committee structure while still meeting OPMA and I'm not sure that's what we heard tonight, but I, I mean, it is true that we can take public comment in committee if we allow the committee to be covered by OPMA, yes? I mean, yeah. So there's an option for taking public comment in committee and we haven't discussed it tonight and I don't think we're ready, I mean, I, it was not presented, but I mean, I think it's something to consider. I feel strongly enough about public comment and strongly enough about the work of subcommittees that I personally would be very interested in considering that. If we are, if we, if we want to, if we want to consider the option, either a hybrid, I mean, I've heard tonight some conversation about do we move to a hybrid mode? Do we start transitioning things into, into study sessions and leave committees in place? Which seems like it might be the, the centroid of where the seven of us are, but I, I'm still interested in understanding what an OPMA committee structure would look like because of the, the, the public comment benefits. You know, the concern is, for me, is not about what night events are held and whether the public will figure out what night something is occurring, but whether the public will be able to contribute meaningfully to public policy. If we have seven things on a study session and we allow the public to talk at the beginning of that study session, my confidence that the public will actually get to contribute meaningfully or that they will perceive that they get to contribute meaningfully is low. So I, I still have, I mean, I still have those concerns. So, round three? Anyone? Councilmember Goodman? No? Oh, just reaching for your beverage. Okay.
Well, I, I guess to respond directly to Tola, I, I don't think that any, I'm confident that all seven of us are not interested in a model that does not allow the public to provide meaningful, meaningful opportunities for public comment. I don't think any one of us thinks that. So the, so by suggesting that we move toward that model and try it out, I'm sure all seven of us will have our eye on that because I'm sure we all have the same concern.
Other comment? Council Deputy President Batiste.
So I had not commented on the, the amount of time for a public comment and, and I would be in favor of giving the full five minutes. I, I, I really feel that, especially if somebody takes the time to put a presentation together, it might take them a little bit longer and not everyone is going to be as adept at, at public speaking or feel completely comfortable. And I, and I do feel that a lot of times people do take less than three minutes. So I would be comfortable with five minutes on public comment. And just in terms of where we're, where we're at, just like lots of great discussion tonight and, and a lot of food for thought, I, I feel like I still have some outstanding questions. And so where I'm landing right now is that I would be in support of doing some sort of pilot program and letting council experience what it would be like to shift over to the work sessions. And I know that that's probably not a very easy task to try to, to queue that up, but even in, in some way, if we're, if we're looking at the high, medium, low and we're doing things differently, more things are going to consent. We have all of this come into a study session. We have the public come and comment. And I think that it, even if, if we were able to do that even, you know, a few times, it would give us a little more of an idea of how that flow would, would go.
Has the administration gotten the feedback they were looking for from council this evening on this particular item?
I think we've gotten a lot of feedback. I'm not sure that we have clarity on how the council wishes to proceed.
So I'm going to ask if we want to, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, and tell me what you guys think, that there's three options, right? There's the study session option, there is some sort of hybrid or starter option. Councilmember Goodman first mentioned it a while ago. And then option three is alternate, alternate committee structure. And unless anybody is opposed, I'm going to suggest each of the seven of us sort of say which of those three options they would, they would, who's closest to what they would like to pursue. Is that a reasonable course of action? I'm not.
Council President? Might I say just a little bit about what that hybrid, in my mind, might look like so that perhaps we can have a shared definition before we do this feedback on those three options?
Sure.
And, and a word about the alternate committee structure as well and the adjustments that I think we would need to make. I, I think there will be some discomfort in making any transition that we make and it will take some time to smooth out all the kinks. It's not going to be perfect. Staff is going to have to adjust how we approach issues, how we present information and council will have its own kind of adjustment as well. So having said that, and hybrid is, is a little challenging to think about how we might structure that. How I might approach it is, I might go through our planning calendar, much as our staff has already done, and I would look at all those things that are on the planning calendar, the work plan right now, and I would try to delineate which ones fall in the low, medium, high categories. Then I would examine those low categories. We would decide, okay, are we going to try to put those on consent? Are we going to try to put them on regular business, but, you know, no referral, right? Because that's what the model dictates. And a medium, medium choices are, they go to work session, they go to committee, they could go to committee or they could stay with the whole. So we'd have to make call on those items. And in the high, we had assumed stay with the whole body. So I'd do that exercise first. I might even pick just a handful of those high items that in a structure, we would maybe think about giving to an ad hoc committee. I think staff had suggested that we might only have, you know, two or so of those a year. I don't know what the magic number is, but we'd go through that exercise first so that we could share that with all of you. And then I think we'd have to pick a two or three month kind of trial period where we're not really sending much of anything to committee. Everything would have to go to study session so that you could get into that rhythm of working through issues just in study sessions. So that means you'd have to commit to all the Mondays, right? And kind of give up referring things to committees. Otherwise, I don't know, I don't know if you can really sense it if we're sending it to both places, plus you're, then you're putting out a whole lot of your time, as is staff. So I'm not sure it's, it's hybrid except that it's sort of piloted a little bit. And, and, you know, there might be a few things as we examine the planning calendar that we say, these things need to still stay in committee because they've already been there for one touch and so we're going to continue on with those. So that's the only way that I would be bringing things, I think, through committee if we're also going to test the study session model. And then on the last, with the alternate committee structure, I think we would have to have some additional conversations about impact to our council leadership meetings. We would probably have to draw up some additional protocol so it was understood by council members. What sort of conversations can take, take place outside of meetings? I, I think that will, it will limit some of that to some degree, whereas the study session model does allow us to group you to have some additional conversations along the way as we're deciding how to approach topics.
So, so before we get a sense, a sense of the body, so alternate committee has a couple of different flavors, right? So if, if, if the council chose alternate committee, there would need to be a follow-on conversation, right, about specifically public feedback in committee versus full OPMA in committee, right?
Yeah, that's the core question.
Right. Because if, if we adopted the no public comment in committee and no substitutions, I, I think what you guys said was that the OPMA risk is quite low, but it's also true that, you know, some of us have already said we'd want to look at other options if we, if we were going to stick with subcommittees. Right? But there is an option that is, that is very, that is low risk, right? With the recommendations that you made for, for alternate subcommittees here this evening.
Yeah. Perhaps I can have our clerk come back up just for a second and clarify under OPMA, how committees could continue to take comment and still be compliant and perhaps highlight any other changes that we might need to.
Sure. Yeah. We put some thought into, you know, what more could we be doing or do differently in lieu of that public comment? We looked at other, Kirkland, Tisha was telling me, was a good example, I believe Shoreline as well, that really have some solid landing pages that, you know, tell the public, this is how you can engage with the council. This is, you know, where you can show up and at what time, or this is how you can email, that sort of thing. So we would look at, you know, improving a landing page. You could certainly, we've been sort of putting the idea of, could an agenda have, you know, maybe the email address of the whole council so that if folks had comments, they could reply if they see something on the agenda that's of interest? You could take the planning calendar example and do some highlights of what's to come. I think Kirkland does that well. We also talked about, in lieu of the email, you could have an e-form where it populated some core information that would help the, the citizen provide their input. And then there's another jurisdiction that leaves behind comment cards. So if someone isn't comfortable speaking up or wants to say something different, they can leave it in the room, it is collected later, but it would come after the meeting rather than before. But we would look for a variety of ways that we could enhance what we're doing. If that's all.
Thank you. I, I think my point was just that if somebody said right now they would support an alternate subcommittee structure, they're not saying that they would support public comment and there would be a downstream conversation about the options within the alternate subcommittee structure. That's all. So, so do we have three options in front of us? Study sessions, pilot program, alternate subcommittees?
Councilmember Goodman.
So I apologize if this is already on your radar. I'm just wondering, are we going to take public comment before we kind of give direction to the?
About how we, about, about public comment? So, so I think on this one, nor, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Normally we don't, but I think this one cries out for public comment before. So if any members of the public would like to speak to this subject?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
My name is Corey Christensen. First, I'd like to make a comment that I agree with Tola's comments about the efficiency and dialogue that goes along in the committee meetings. One, one thing about the, this, this idea about efficiency, it all seems to be aimed at the public and the council. And actually, the elephant in the room is the administration because if we got agenda bills that had been fully vetted through the community and had more robust input, more meaningful input upfront, then your job would be a lot faster. Lots of times it's, it's, that's where the hard work is and that's where the work is in committee. The reason I came to speak tonight was about public comment, thinking that every opportunity that you have for public comment, we need to have more opportunities earlier and more often in the process and more meaningful in the process. And I'm actually talking about before the, the council gets, gets a hold of things. All of the other things that were rattled off that were, you know, websites, social media, comment cards, emails, all of those things are subject to filtering, interpretation, moderation, and who knows if you ever read them. One thing about the audience comments, like I'm doing right now, you have to hear it, it's on TV, somebody else will hear it. And that actually means a lot to people. A few issues that I think, looking back, that it may, they may have taken some time, but they were actually the right thing. Skateboard park, excellent example of, excuse me, staff basically deciding they weren't going to do the skateboard park. And yes, it did score low on their survey, which is another topic of mine. Some of these surveys that, they're only as good as the information that goes in them or the quality of the survey. Now, the, the Park Bond survey that had the skate park was an EMC survey and the methodology was good, but it's still the questions that get asked. And what the, the problem there was they weren't asking questions about drugs in parks or kids in need, free, free parks and all of, certain things, things that people can do for free, which this meant. And that meant that Counselor March, Winterstein, Barber, and a number of you had to, were listening to the community and all, and coming together and actually coming out of the system and meeting community. That's really important. And one thing about the audience comments, we actually learned a lot as a community, listening to the skateboard kids, the, the parents concerned about drugs, all of these. listening to the skateboard kids, the parents concerned about drugs, all of these things that we don't know about unless we hear these people talk. Another thing like that was the drug injection site that Counselor Winterstein championed. Now, that was a really tough issue because, man, I'm sorry about that, but I think about the people that came out and talked about that. And, excuse me, I'm really not a pro-drug person, but listening to the community, these were opportunities that we got to hear people that really had problems, both sides of the problem. And even though we didn't agree to do that, we learned a lot. And so this audience comments is important because it isn't just about what's on the table right now. It's about getting an idea of what our community thinks. So I think we need to be able to do more of that rather than less of that. Anyway, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Okay, here we go. David Kapler again. With the agenda bill, it's either refer to committee or it's on the consent agenda. It seems like there's some times that it should just be debated that night a little bit. Maybe it just needs a little more information out there, and a decision could be made and save a lot of steps. Committees match the expertise of council members and their interests. And it also gives some accountability and responsibility for the chair of that committee to make sure people know what's going on and work it through, and that they will have something that the whole council can live with, the community can live with, and those kinds of things. So if you have seven people, and who's in charge of that? Who's really following that? It's all going to be the council president, I don't think. That's realistic, is not. Staff. Seven council members going to call the staff person about a certain agenda bill? Or is that, I think, you know, if something's important there, and they all might want to do that. Staff and meetings. How many department heads are going to be sitting through these sessions in the gallery waiting for their turn to be there? I think it's very inefficient for staff and actually can trigger a lot more staff Spooky that Bellevue did the wireless thing in two touches. I'm concerned that the transparency issue could trigger a lot of public request for information. And I've done one of those myself on the senior center. Eighteen years, I was on the council. Only once did I have to go through all my emails, personal and city, to give to the city clerk to deal with a public records request. If there's a perception that this stuff is just going through real quick, you know, who's actually feeding the council all the information? I need to know that, so I do the public records request. So staff could end up with a lot more work rather than less. Public comment before a staff presentation is wrong. What's written on an agenda bill might have been written weeks or a month before it's been, gets at a certain point. So it's really important that the updated positions and all those kinds of things are what the person is commenting on, not what was written in just in the agenda bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else in the public here this evening. Back to the seven of us. Does everybody agree that the three things we sort of want to give a temperature to is study sessions, pilot program with study sessions, and going with some sort of alternate subcommittee structure? Those are, those are basically the three things and three options in front of us? Not seeing any boo-booin? All right? Who wants to go first? Don't everybody all jump forward? Council Deputy President Bateese?
I'm in favor of the pilot program. I feel like I still have some outstanding questions in my head that I'm not opposed to it, and I'd like to see us be more efficient, and I'd like to see how things are formed in that. And I think it would just help me to get some of those questions answered and go through the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
So I am really pretty ambivalent in terms of which way we go. But what I do care deeply about is that we improve public access to information, that we encourage public comment, and mostly, we also encourage engagement of the public as early in the process as we humanly can. So I am open to doing a pilot of the works study session model. I'm not convinced, based on what I've seen right now, that it will help us at all in terms of efficiency. And, you know, and I guess maybe in some ways, I don't really care that much about efficiency. What I really care about is that we are effective. So if we are not effective, it doesn't matter how efficient we are. So let's focus on being effective first and efficient second. And, you know, and if this gets us there and it meets those things around public access to information, public comment time, and that people understand what we're doing as early in the process as humanly possible, then I can get behind it.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
I will second what Councilmember Ray said for all the same reasons, except that I would edge more toward the idea of doing study sessions with a review at like three months or whatever it would be to say, what do we like, what do we don't like, and is it working? Rather than going into it assuming that we're piloting something that's going to end unless we like it. I guess just kind of a little bit of a change in focus because I don't want staff to go into something feeling like it's hopeless to put the work and effort into it.
Hopeless?
Yes, hopeless.
All right. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I too, plus one, what Councilmember Ray said, and I have two additional comments. One is I wholeheartedly agree with David Kapler about the public comment. It would be meaningless to have it at the beginning of the study session when we haven't even had a staff presentation. And council questions. And then the second is three to five minutes. I'm fine either way. I just think it needs to be consistent.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I, similar to Councilmember Ray, I think that either, I think what we're trying to grapple with is that we have a couple options, and I'm just not convinced that the study sessions would be more efficient. And I'm very concerned that, I'm just not seeing the reasons why we would be making better decisions with that system. So the alternate committee structure is where I've, where I think my preference is at this point. If that's not the will of the body, and the will of the body is to pilot the study session, then I would say my preference would be to have a lot more of the ad hoc committees so that we still have that in-depth discussion at the three level, at the three-person level as possible, so that that would be another sort of hybrid. But I'm more in favor of the alternate committee structure at this time. And then to reiterate, I think that most people for public comment take less than three minutes or approximately three minutes. But if we put the time limit at three minutes, we'll be cutting some people off. And I don't think it's going to save us much time, but I do think it makes the process feel less friendly for folks that make the time to come and speak to us in person, which we should really valuable, value their time. I mean, I certainly do. And so I just think that five minutes is friendlier, so that's my preference for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Not talking about a hybrid anymore. We're talking about a pilot, which is the study session format with a, some date certain when we're going to reassess. That's what I'm commenting on.
Yes, that's, I believe, I think...
Well, it's hard to say no to that, though, but I think would be very, very clear, we'd have to be very, very clear on what the, how we would make that assessment. And I would want to see something on that soon. Like, how do we decide if it's not going to work? I don't want to, I don't want to be wondering how we're going to decide that. And I don't want to talk about tonight anymore either. Okay? Most of the arguments, I'm sensitive of them. Most of them are hypothetical. And I disagree with the comment that comments before discussion is meaningless. It's later in the process, but we get lots of meaningful comment during our regular council meetings as well. That, I don't know, I don't consider those comments meaningless. And so, and I don't know if that was the intent, but that's the way it sounds. But having said that, if we could do it such that we can do, continue to hear it the way we're doing it now, I would absolutely prefer that in our study sessions. I just don't agree with that the comments before are meaningless. So I would prefer that.
All right. Thank you. And for the comment?
Well, only because I want to make sure that, I mean, the comment that Paul made about the intent about having comment, I was echoing what David Kapler said. If you haven't had a presentation on it, and we haven't had council questions on it, then, you know, maybe meaningless is strong, but it's certainly not super meaningful because the public hasn't heard all the information. And I want to hear what the public has to say after they have the information. Typically, when we get public comment in the front of a council meeting, we've had some sort of presentation on it at another meeting. So that's what I meant, Paul, just to clarify.
Well, thank you for explaining how the process works. I was very familiar with how this often unfolds. I just, there was a public comment that said that was meaningless, and I disagreed with that public comment. And so, because I do value the comments whenever they are.
All right. So I'm going to say I still would prefer an alternate subcommittee. However, if we are going to go with a pilot program, I would feel very strongly to see if we can do the public comment after the staff presentation. I think the idea of, you have a staff presentation, you can ask technical, you ask technical clarifying questions, you take public comment, and then you deliberate. If we can do that in the study sessions, I think that would be much, much more valuable. I think public comment is always meaningful, but it's more meaningful once the public understands the latest information on the issue before us. So I think you've gotten, now, certainly, you have the feedback you were looking for from the seven of us.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll go away and try to figure out how to package this up. And so staff will have quite a few discussions we will need to have, and probably a couple with council leadership as well, to think through some of these transition issues and really look at what is on our docket for the next few months and how does it lend itself to making that transition.
So I see some rustling. Are people hoping that we are not going to, now pushing on three and a half hours that we call it a night? I'm seeing, I'm seeing some general, I'm seeing some folks who would like to call it an evening.
I think we can talk about that. I mean, I don't see that taking...
I saw, I would like if there are, there's more than one who seem like they would like to stop at this point. And I would like to defer to everybody being bright-eyed and bushy-tailed when we cover these things. So unless, there you have it. And we don't have anything else other than that, right? We're no other walk-on anything. All right. Any final comments, anyone? I want to thank staff for putting this together. Tina and Tisha, I know we've had lots of strong feedback, but it's, you guys do a great job marshaling all the information that you have to for us and trying to make sure that we are always both in the spirit and the letter of the law. So thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.